Good evening, everyone, and welcome. And if I can invite people to stand as you're able for the singing of Oh, Canada. And the choir this evening is all of us. And welcome to the Rogers Television audience who's joining us this evening. It's been moved by Councillor Ionidas that the minutes of the regular meeting held May 11th, as mailed to the mayor and council, be accepted. All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Any disclosures of pecuniary interest? None? Oh, sorry, Councillor Davey.
Yes, just on the item for Heritage 1333 King Street East. I have the same planner retained for property.
Sorry? Yes. Click in. Go ahead.
So we disclosed the reason, correct? So I have the same planner representing this person, I have retained for property.
Okay, thank you. Noted. And any communications referred to file? There aren't any? So we'll move into... There are no presentations. Actually, before I go into presentations, I do want to take this opportunity to welcome our new employee, and that's our Director of Communications, Victoria Robb. Welcome, Victoria. I'm wondering if you want to just click in. I'll get you to maybe just introduce yourself and a little bit of where you came from. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, thank you for having me here at the city. I'm really excited to be here. My name's Victoria Robb. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Kitchener, and I've worked in public sector communications for about 14 years, mostly in healthcare, where I've worked at both of our local hospitals. In the last two and a half years, I've been actually traveling out of the city to Hamilton, Ontario, where I led the corporate communications team at St. Joseph's Healthcare in Hamilton. So I'm thrilled to be back in the city. I'm thrilled to be working downtown, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity.
Okay, welcome. We'll now move into delegations. I'd like to remind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentations. For councils' benefit, there are a number of handouts on your desk. One is from Mr. Victor Labresh, who we'll be hearing from later. A second one is from a number of slides about the properties that we're dealing with from a heritage perspective, and that's from Ms. Drake. And the final one is our first delegation, and that's a handout from the 2015 Summer Lights Festival, and welcome to Charlene Le Duc. Welcome, Charlene.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just gonna take off a bit of my glasses so I can read, just so I can be comfortable. So, through you, Mayor Verbanovic, I am kindly and proudly here to represent Summer Lights Festival in 2015. I thought about what kind of presentation I wanted to make to you and for you and everyone behind me, and apparently Rogers. And I decided to do top 10 list of goodies that you need to know, kind of Dave-style, about Summer Lights Festival, past and present. So here I go. Please do not hesitate to laugh at any point. So, June 20th, 2015, 8 to 1 a.m., between Waterloo and Kitchener in 2014, we saw 15-plus people that came out, and that does not include animals. Backyard tourists, dogs, families, accidental visitors, aliens, neighborhoods, in-laws, ex-partners, techies, nerds, aunts, business owners visiting, the hard-to-get-out-of-the-house type, the long-lost friends, the students, the groups, the leaders, people with no titles, high school crushes, that's right, even high school crushes came out, people saw them. And probably your boss, the charopitus, the kids, the moms and the dads, and all made it out last year and fell in love. Not with each other, but they fell in love with our community all over again and again. So, in 2014, we showcased tech and dance and arts and culture and juggling and visual arts chart, chalk art, tech explorations, balloons, large-size Scrabble music, food, buses, open doors to shops, walking tours, biking tours, tech showcases, and the night market points, theater, ghostly tours, screenplays in Dough City and Gem Sessions, cloggers, painting, and comedy belly dancing and parade, and I can probably go on. And yes, I know I'm going fast. Well, number four is, we did what we love. We showcased our unique diversity, and we reveled in the glow of collaboration. Number five, SLF has four guiding principles that I need to share with you. It is everything that we do personally with and on Summer Lights Festival: diversity, experience, collaboration, and a sense of belonging. Number six, doing it again, yes, well, because we love with what we do. And probably a dash of craziness in there, too. Number seven, 2015, city of Kitchener, this is what we're doing, King Street, queen-to-Victoria-ish. There's a reason for that-ish. And Ontario, DeGoude's Lane, Hall's Lane, vacant buildings, Conrad Center, and all kinds of nooks and crannies. If you live downtown, we just may be in your house. And if there is an opportunity to be in your house, please email me. I have lots of ideas. Number eight, we have over 600 artists, sponsors, volunteers, and programming partners and businesses, cultural gems, participating in 2015. And in number nine, in 2015, SLX Partners made it possible with our sponsors, and that includes everyone sitting in this building, everyone that you represent. As a community, we made this happen. Number 10 is Merci. So, what does this look like in 2015? Well, I'm gonna tell you that there are many individuals, groups, and businesses that stood up and said, "I believe in what you do, and I believe that this is the largest festival of collaboration, and I want to be part of it." People like Momentum, Loop Clothing, Andron Homes, CHC Realty, The Walper, The Record, Community Tech, Google, and all of the developers downtown, they said, "Here you go. Here are the keys, illuminate downtown, change that rhetoric, change that 'we are amazing,' and that, yes, we have vacant space, but look at it now." And they gave us, they gave us the keys. I'm so proud of that. And the city of Kitchener, oh my gosh, over in that other tower, that is where arts and culture and Ekdev, by such a fierce leader who's not here yet, that runs the show and makes such great decisions and support our community, and we are blessed to have them. So what's happening this year? Well, I could probably go on. You can see that my speech is very quick, but I'm gonna tell you that everything is gonna be going on. We have taken all the neighborhood groups, all of the cultural institutions, and we've challenged them, and all of the artists and all the tech, and we're just gonna get together and have a big love fest. It is a showcase. You need to be there. So I leave you with this, two things. Number one, share the love. You represent parts of your community, parts of our community, and I hope that you go back tonight and share the love of what you're doing. I also want to see your face out. I want to see your dog, your exes, your... Well, let's not get too far on your exes, but I want to see you out there. And if you are available, I have opportunities for you to meet the people that you represent. And if you are interested, there is an email on the bottom of Dave's list. Reach out to me, and we have a lovely volunteer coordinator, and we have a lovely spot, just a really special spot for you councillors, if you wanted to be with the people that you represent, and then also volunteer. I am here to say thank you. That is really the reason, because I don't think it gets often said to you, and I don't think it gets often said to the other... And that is my cue. Questions, comments? What do you got?
Wonderful. We have one.
Oh.
Councillor Bush.
Thank you, Charlene, for coming in and sharing with us your enthusiasm, which is infectious. I want to also just ask for clarification. It wasn't just 15 people who came out, it was 15,000, right? 15,000?
Yes. Did I say 15?
I'm not sure if that... I heard that wrong or not, but I just want to make sure everyone...
She whispered the thousand part.
Okay, excellent. I think, well, so, three years ago, some friends and I went out to Toronto, to Nuit Blanche, and I thought, "Wow, this is amazing." I was tired, but this was amazing. And then I thought, "Well, I wish that we could do something like that in Kitchener." And then last summer, when I went, when we went to Summer Lights, we were blown away. And we, there we had this ignited city, and that's what the downtown vision is, is to make our city more vibrant, and that's exactly what Summer Lights did. So, thank you.
Thank you. One last note, it is the weekend of multicultural festivals. We branded it "Don't sleep." Don't ask us to get any sleep, don't sleep. We work with a multicultural festival, so during the day, multicultural festivals, Summer Lights at night. Thank you very much. I'm honored to be here. Thank you.
So we can go from like 2:00 in the morning right into the next day and start dancing multicultural dances?
We could put tents up. We're not opposed to that.
Perfect. That's a great idea.
In Victoria Park.
Thanks a lot, Charlene. Your group did a fantastic job last year with this festival. It was amazing to see the community come alive and looking forward to it this year.
I'm only as good as everyone else, so thank you very much.
Thanks so much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Municipal Heritage Register, which is clauses 2 to 8 of the Heritage Kitchener Report. Michelle Drake will start things off with a presentation, and then we have, I believe, six delegations on this issue. So, Michelle, we will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Verbanovic and members of council. I'm here this evening to provide an update on the Heritage Register. The project itself began almost 10 years ago in response to amendments to provincial legislation. And although the legislation did not require councils to require evaluations or any sort of notice, our council chose to adopt a four-step listing process, which provided a fair and transparent process with opportunities for public consultation. Staff do believe that this is one of, if not the, most rigorous listing processes in the province. The project started with over 1,000 properties that needed to go through the evaluation process. At first, that number was a little bit daunting, but staff, along with Heritage Kitchener volunteers, worked through those numbers by prioritizing initially with direction from council in the downtown, then onto our rural areas, onto our mixed-use corridors, and much more recently, lands in and around the rapid transit route and rapid transit station areas. To provide some numbers as to where we are today, since we started the project, council has listed 189 properties on the Municipal Heritage Register. An additional 28 properties are recommended by your Heritage Kitchener Committee for consideration this evening. The largest group of properties was 75% of properties evaluated, did not meet the criteria, were not listed, and therefore do not have any heritage status. Unfortunately, we did come across a number of properties through the review that had been demolished over the years. I would suggest that although the number seems high at 143, they were potential properties, so they would have had to go through the same evaluation process, and not all may have met the criteria. In terms of what's left, there's 52 properties that are left to be evaluated. Those properties are properties that we cannot access from the public realm and therefore cannot complete an evaluation. So those properties will remain on our current inventory until such time as we're provided access to those properties to complete an evaluation. And at that time, I would anticipate that they would come forward on a case-by-case basis. Although the project focused solely on listing properties, I thought it was a good opportunity to let you know about other heritage statuses that have occurred over the last several years. So namely, most recently, council passed two notices of intent to designate, one being the smokestack at the Langtannery and two being a farmhouse on New Dundee Road. There were no appeals to those proposals, and I understand the bylaws are actually before you this evening. Another six properties have been individually designated over the last few years, with our largest group being 304 properties identified and designated in our newest heritage district, the Civic Centre, Neighborhood Heritage Conservation District. So what will happen now is this project will turn over to a core business function, where we anticipate that property listings will come forward to council on a case-by-case basis as needed. All of this work demonstrates the city's proactive approach to identifying, evaluating, and protecting properties, both through listing on our register as well as through designation under the Ontario Heritage Act. And I do believe these are accomplishments that the city should be proud of. With that, I do know there are a number of delegations here this evening, and I'm available should there be any questions throughout the night.
Do see one question for you at this point. Councillor Ionidas?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Zaire. I mean, Mayor Verbanovic, sorry about that.
It's okay. We're only six months into it, but we got...
Sorry about that.
It's okay. I forgot, today I said councillor Galloway instead of Galloway-Seelock, so you're entitled.
Thanks, Michelle, for your presentation. So I see that we got a handout. Is this from yourself?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And what is listed here, these are all the owners that are, that are ongoing discussions or, and some that are opposed, is that correct?
That's correct.
So whatever else is on the list here right now, like that's on our agenda, the rest of those owners, they're okay with having their property listed?
We either understand that they're okay, or we have not heard from them throughout the process.
Would it be beneficial for staff and yourself and the property owners to maybe have some further discussions, and maybe if possible, if I move a motion for deferral, so that you can facilitate those discussions? Would that be of benefit to you?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, I guess it depends with respect to which properties. We followed a consistent process throughout, and I wouldn't want to waver from that. I know there are some properties that we've had dialogue over the last week or so, and some councillors have been involved in that dialogue, and they may warrant a deferral, but there's definitely circumstances where I don't know that a deferral will change the outcome.
Okay. If I gave you the list right now, could you answer that, then, whether or not you'd be in favor of that, or?
Yes.
Okay. The properties that I'm looking at are 101 Glasgow Street, 149 Strange Street, 248 One.
How about we get our... Do you want to comment one by one, or?
Sure. So, yes, I would be supportive of a deferral for 101 Glasgow Street.
Okay. 2481 Kingsway Drive?
Yes, I would be supportive of a deferral.
Okay. 535 Park Street?
Yes, I would be supportive of a deferral.
Okay. And 111 Aaron Street West?
I would support a deferral with the caveat that I have attempted to meet with this owner multiple times, and that those discussions haven't taken place.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'll move that motion, that deferral, when the time is appropriate.
Okay. I'll come back to you on those. Councillor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair. To Michelle. First of all, I would point out that those, many of those deferrals that Councillor Ionidas is referring to, I believe Michelle has already had meetings with the people and is in fact okay with deferrals. That's in the report. But I wanted to ask Michelle, Michelle, when there's a deferral before council on any issue, there's always a date attached to it. I don't like the idea of open-ended deferrals. I'm willing to support several of these deferrals, because I've sat in on the meetings. Is there a date where they return for the normal listing process?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic. Almost made the same mistake.
It's okay.
In the past, we've taken both approaches. Sometimes we've assigned a date to return back to council, and otherwise, we've left it open-ended. I think my preference, given the discussions we've had with some of those property owners, as well as some of the feedback we got from those property owners in terms of their own timing, that there would be a preference to leave it open-ended.
And if they're open-ended, isn't there the potential they be demolished?
That, there is a risk that they could apply for demolition permits, and those permits could be issued, correct?
And if that happened, would that come to you, to Heritage? Yeah?
The demolition permits are flagged in our internal system, so staff would be notified.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as a follow-up to that, before I go to Councillor Fernandez, when you say you'd be flagged and notified, that would then provide an opportunity for you to recommend to council to take immediate action if there was a concern, correct?
Correct, although the timing may be prohibitive.
Okay. Councillor Fernandez?
Can you just clarify what you just said about timing being prohibitive?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic. The current building code timelines where a property is not listed, depending on the type of property, range from 10 to 30 business days. Even with the most recent example, if council recalls the convent, it was listed, and we had 60 days, and that timeframe was very tight to be informed, communicate with the owner, prepare a report for committee, and ultimately council.
So the one, the list that was just given to you, I didn't hear what you said about 149 Strange, if you were amenable to a deferral on that or not?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, yes. 101 Glasgow Street and 149 Strange Street are essentially the same parcel, but because there's generally two different buildings, we refer to both addresses, and I would be supportive of a deferral for both.
Okay, so out of the five that was listed by Councillor Ionidas, four you would be all right with a deferral. And what was the reaction from our Heritage Committee on those properties? They've already been vetted through the Heritage Committee, correct?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, the original staff report did go to Heritage Kitchener. At that point, Heritage Kitchener was aware that the owner of 101 Glasgow Street slash 149 Strange Street may submit additional comments, but those weren't available at the time of the meeting. At that time, we also had not heard from the owner of 2481 Kingsway Drive, and the owner of 535 Park Street attended as a delegation at the Heritage Meeting.
At present, what we are doing is we're listing. These have not been designated. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And from going through the process of sitting on heritage when they're listed, it really, the most critical point for the owners to understand is that it gives us, council, and gives heritage planners enough time for, should there a demolition take place, gives us a bit more of a timeline, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Additionally, there would be no other restrictions on the property until it was actually designated, right?
Through you, Mayor Zaire, one point of clarification would be currently properties that are on our Heritage Kitchener inventory are subject to our Heritage Impact Assessment process. There are some properties that are not on that inventory, and so they would be subject to the Heritage Impact Assessment process as well if they were listed.
Okay. Okay, so that they would have to go through the next step, right? Just a question about the 52 properties that you listed here that require evaluation. You said you couldn't access them from the public realm. What is our next steps with those 52 properties? I mean, I'm sure you've reached out to the owners of those properties, and you've asked to come and view them. Is it just that you've been refused that opportunity? And are those a lost cause for us?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, the staff did reach out to those property owners, sometimes upwards of three or four times. A handful of property owners have responded and did not provide access. In all other cases, I did not hear back at all from the property owners. I would suggest it's not a lost cause. Some of our inventoried properties that have been on the inventory since the 70s are similar. They've been on a list, they've been flagged, and should a demolition permit come in, it's given us the opportunity to document, or should a planning application come in, it's given us the opportunity to get on-site at that point.
I just, I also want to take a moment to thank you for, you've done the yeoman's bulk of work on this, you and Mr. Benson and our Heritage Committee, and in an effort to preserve and conserve our heritage, there's been a tremendous amount of work, and I want to thank you on behalf of myself for the work you've done.
Thank you.
Thanks. I think you meant yeoman's work. Councillor Schneider?
Yes, I would like to add 825 King Street West to the list of deferrals, just due to the letter they sent us, being in a precarious financial situation and having depleting resources.
If Councillor Ionidas doesn't move that, I'll come back to you. Well, when we get to those. 825 King West. Councillor Singh?
Yes, thank you. I was going to make a comment that perhaps before a vote is taken on the deferral, it'd be advisable to hear from any delegate...
We will be doing that.
So that we can include perhaps their potential property before taking decision. The other point I wanted to make, I was planning on not having to go through this exercise. These are the questions that get asked, you know, the potential impact to the property owner, and then questions get asked as to the economic impact at the same time, where there's a counterargument to it, too. So I want just clarity on that as well. If a property is listed, that's a public document?
Yes, that's correct.
So if there's any development potential of a property, that owner would have to disclose that that is registered on the Heritage Registry, correct?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, I am not a real estate expert, but I would anticipate that that would be appropriate for an owner to declare.
Have you ever done an assessment of that impact, sale impact to that property owner? Have you ever done that internal assessment of that?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, there have been a number of studies that have been completed. They have focused primarily on designation, which is a much higher standard, and they have demonstrated, those studies have demonstrated that properties retain their value and sometimes increase in value with a heritage status.
Properties that have potential of greater density development?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, I don't know that the studies have gone into that degree of detail. I think that local examples have demonstrated those economic benefits.
And I appreciate that, and you know, you're only outlining the information we have at hand, but to ensure protection of homeowner rights or property owner rights, we need to be reflective on the full picture, not specifically on the studies that you've just outlined. And if it's work that we haven't done, perhaps that's something that we need to consider in ensuring that we have a better understanding of what that impact is when designating. Thank you.
I think, I'm just gonna say there that I think staff, you know, responded to the question and indicated, the studies that have been done have indicated that the properties have maintained or increased in value. I think we want to be careful with our judgment on those studies. I think it's fair to say, and I think what we're hearing from staff is that, you know, without looking at a specific piece of property, it's difficult to, in the absence of any other... other information, to share anything other than that. Counselor Gazzola?
All of these properties that are here tonight came before the Heritage Committee and have, are being recommended to be listed, right? The Heritage Committee has gone with the recommendation, right?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, yes, that's correct, although some property owners were in contact with staff since the committee meeting and staff were meeting with those owners. Certain council members being the ward representatives or the Heritage Kitchener councillors, as well as Brian Bennett from Economic Development were invited to some of those meetings.
These ones that have been, 101 Glasgow and 2481 Kingsway, have they contacted you that they want a deferral?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, that's correct. So staff met with 101 Glasgow Street slash 149 Strange Street, the owner as well as their planning consultant. We had a good conversation. Brian Bennett from Economic Development was involved in those conversations, as was Counselor Yuneski and Counselor Etherington, I believe. It's been a long week, I apologize. And the outcome of those conversations was that a deferral would be appropriate, given the direction the conversation was going and that there may be opportunities for staff to alleviate the concerns of the owner. 2481 Kingsway Drive, we've been in contact with the owner, however, we have not had a chance to meet. And again, we would like to have that opportunity to meet with that property owner, given they've put that request forward.
Okay, just one final quick, and I'm not sure that you're in a position to do this, but could you just give me briefly an outline what provincial legislation states towards what we're doing here? And not only, I understand that we're governed somewhat by provincial legislation, but also by the official plans of our, of our own city and the official plan of the region. What do those ask us to do?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, briefly, the two pieces of legislation are the Planning Act and the Heritage Act. The Heritage Act is the piece of legislation that gives us the authority and requires us to list and designate properties to conserve them. The Planning Act goes into much more detail about the requirement to conserve our cultural heritage resources as part of development and planning. And that includes conservation of resources on properties as well as conservation adjacent to properties. And that carries through into policies that have been adopted in the regional official plan as well as policies that have been adopted in Kitchener's official plan.
Are those rules and regulations fairly definite or are they sort of, if you'd like?
The, the rules in the provincial legislation are requirements as part of the planning process.
Thank you.
Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Bennett. It's basically a point of order, I guess. When we get around to considering these, could we do them one at a time? I know that prolongs the event, but I'm prepared to support the deferrals recommended by Michelle, but maybe not others, so I'd like them to be separate.
So, well, what I'll ask maybe is if there's any you specifically want dealt with separately, let's do that.
Okay.
That way we don't have to go through all of them one by one.
Yeah, and I would point out that they are listed in the report before us.
Yep. Okay, so let's move on to the delegations then. And the first delegation, Mr. Karpal Kanwal indicated that he was withdrawing as a delegation, so move to Slavko Miladinevich. Welcome, Mr. Miladinevich.
Good evening, your worship, councillors, city staff, attendees and everyone who's watching at home. I am Slavko Miladinevich. I came here this evening as a resident of Kitchener to show my support to every homeowner that is in opposition to having the property listed by the municipality. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Miladinevich? No? Okay. Oh, Counselor Singh?
Yeah, would you like to outline your reasons for your opposition?
It's their property. They should, they should have, they should decide the fate of their property. If it's important, such as 418 Glasgow, as I believe it's important to the heritage of Kitchener, or it is, it's more than just important, that family, before I continue, 418 Glasgow Street is a farmhouse that belonged to a family that brought great, great, great prosperity to this residence of Kitchener. They also built the communities between the rubber factory on Strange Street all the way up to the elegant neighborhood of Westmount Golf Course area. And since then, that house has had two additions, one on the rear, one on the side. The architectural style is Italianate. Am I pronouncing correct, Michelle? Italianate? And I don't know if I should raise this at council, but I'm also a committee member at Heritage Kitchener. And I raised a point through email that this, I believe this should be protected by the city, so let's say the homeowner is willing to part with it, then if there's a surplus in the budget, have the city purchase it and then remove the renovations, remove the additions renovated to its original state and then start a campaign, a public campaign to anyone who prospered from that rubber factory on Strange Street to donate a hundred, a thousand dollars or whatever to cover the cost of the renovation and to have it added as a part of the Kitchener Heritage Walking Trail. And you could have a wall along the front or the side of the street outlining the history of this family, what they've done, the prosperity they brought to the families, the war effort they brought with their factories and everything.
So you think just merely listing is not enough? There needs to be more done by the city to really identify the two significance and the historical aspect?
First of all, my priority is first with the homeowner. If the homeowner doesn't want it listed, I'm all for it. But if there's a surplus in the city budget, make an offer to the homeowner to purchase it from him.
If you want to preserve it, the city should-
Preserve it, yes, yes. I didn't hear your, your folks' microphone.
Yeah, I agree with your comments. Thank you.
So just to be clear, you're saying that if they don't want it designated or listed, we should not be listing it, correct?
Correct.
That's what you're saying, okay. Counselor Gazzola?
I will see all answers. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you.
You are on the Heritage Committee.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Our next delegation is Victor La Bresch. Welcome, Mr. La Bresch.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Members of council, city staff, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Victor La Bresch from a local planning firm of La Bresch Patterson Associates located at 330 Trillium Drive here in Kitchener. Thank you for your consideration tonight and I just wanted to make sure that you each have a copy of our letter that was passed out earlier. It's essentially one, one and a half page, although it includes previous submissions we've made on behalf of the landowner, owner of 1333 King Street East, Mr. Faraz. Emmanuel Faraz is here with me this evening, a longtime resident over 40 years here in the city of Kitchener and has owned this property for well over 25 years. We're pleased to represent him in this situation where he objects to the listing of his property on the Heritage Inventory. After further considerations of our objections that we've submitted previously at Heritage Kitchener, which is based primarily on planning policies and opportunities that the property has, which is located at the corner of King and Preston, directly opposite the, the, sorry, the Center, Rockway Center, I think, property and also the official plan opportunities that the property has, we wish to reaffirm our continued objection to this. We've had further investigation of the property as well as circumstances surrounding the Rockway property that the city owns and operates. The existing building, turning back to that, was built in 1955. There was a rear addition, built a three-bay garage addition in 1965 approximately. I would characterize the house as kept in very good repair, thankfully by Mr. Faraz, but I would not say it was significantly heritage entailed by that regard. I'd also like to note that the property only met 30% of what the listed criteria should be for consideration of listing the property. Again, only 30% of the criteria was met. I would submit that at least 50% of the criteria should be met, but didn't come close in this particular case. He's asked me to indicate the conflict, and I say this respectfully, to city council that its own property directly across the street was recommended by staff to be listed as a designated property recently, or at least listed on the inventory, sorry, the Heritage Registrar. And this council predominantly and its members waived that designation or listing of the property, again, directly across the street. He sees that very perplexing, very perplexing, and I do as well. I think it doesn't send the right message and it would be a conflict and a contradiction in this case if the city is not following its policies and, but imposes it directly across the street. So I think enough said on that basis. So we would, again, respectfully submit that the property be dropped from the consideration of being listed as a, on the Heritage List. Alternatively, we would suggest a deferral on the matter to have more time to discuss the opportunities. I think our letter that I submitted includes a couple of pictures on the second and third page, which shows that there are a couple of opportunities available to the Rockway Center to potentially take up some of the properties in this small block bounded by Charles, King, Sheldon and Preston. I think that should be explored over the coming months. And if not, there's still redevelopment potential for the subject property on its own and together with the block and its neighbors. Because there's only eight properties in here and I believe it has a good chance to be redeveloped in the not-too-distant future. Lastly, I would just like to note, and I think this goes to the intent and integrity of the landowner, that he wanted me to note that there are no active plans to demolish this building, just for comfort, I wanted to let you know that. Thank you for your consideration. Be pleased to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we have a number of people with questions for you. Counselor Yuneski?
Thank you, Mr. La Bresch, for coming in. And I know we met last week with, with your client to go over the properties with staff, with Michelle Drake, to consider your request in terms of the issues that you, that you raised and outlined here this evening. I know you don't want to have the, this property considered and put on the inventory list, however, you've asked also here as part of your letter for a deferral. Michelle pointed out earlier that we could do a deferral with a certain date or a, a no-date set. What did you have in mind as to how much time you would require as a deferral to, to do some further investigations and discussions with staff and pursuit of other matters tying in with this property?
Through Mayor Verbanovic to Counselor Yuneski, we don't see that there needs to be a timeline placed on this and, you know, Mr. Faraz is not imminently selling the property or demolishing it, so we would like to have the opportunity and work with staff to consider options for the property in the surrounding area without a, without a timeline looming over us.
Would you, now I know you're talking about discussion with properties around, abutting you because you've shown that little map and it's sort of limited just because of the size of the block and the lane that's in that scenario. But we also discussed about the garages there at the back that has restricted you, as I understand, from developing or leasing out the building at this point in time because it's vacant, you pointed out last week. And that would allow you for some potential to utilize the building in the interim if those garages were removed to, and to move forward in the interim?
Through Mayor Verbanovic to Counselor Yuneski, yes, that's, that's correct. I mean, we see that as at least a first step. But again, the, the listing of the property would put restrictions on the property similar to what other speakers have echoed. We would say the same. It's not necessary in this case. I'd also like to point out that City of Kitchener's official plan, and I deal with a lot of official plans across Ontario, is, got some fairly heavy-weighted policies on heritage protection and demolition control, site plan control, urban design. So I don't see in this particular case with a house that was built in 1955 firstly, warranting listing. And then secondly, I think that there's, there's already planning tools in place that if addition came through, forward, you know, with the three garages at the back gone, that a sympathetic complimentary addition could be done to the existing house without any problem, without needing it to be listed. And then conversely, if a broader project came forward for that entire block, which I think everybody would welcome, we don't want any policies to be, to be in the way for a better, higher-order development for the city and the benefit of the community broadly.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next we have Counsel Marsh.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in and presenting regarding this property. I want to make a couple of points just to clarify. First of all, it was not this council that made a decision regarding a property owned by the City of Kitchener, it was a previous council. And I also want to ask, do you really think that it is a strong protection of heritage property, of, of property such as yours, if we didn't list it, that, that demolition could be issued within 10 to 30 working days? Do you think that that is, that is strong protection of this property?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, to Counselor Marsh, that, I'm not sure I understand the question. I think as I indicated at the end of my submission, that there are no active plans to demolish this building.
Well, that, that is neither here nor there because if, if it's not listed, then any day that the owner wished to do so, the owner could come forward with a demolition permit request. And the, from my understanding, there would only be an allowance of 10 to 30 working days for the city to respond. And, and I'm just, I'm just questioning, you know, respectfully, your assertion that you feel the City of Kitchener has some of the best heritage protection, protections in place of any municipality within Ontario. And I, I, I would question that if, if the property that you're referring to, you know, let's say we decided not to list it, then I realize you're saying, and we, we can trust you in good faith, that there are no demolition plans, but plans change, you never know. So that's the purpose of this discussion tonight is to try and protect properties from potential demolition or destruction.
Through Mayor Verbanovic to the council, what I was referring to in terms of heritage policies were things that don't go to the extent of stopping demolition, but require sympathetic complimentary additions, redevelopment complimentary to existing buildings. What listing this property does, however, unnecessarily, in my opinion, in this particular case, given the limited age of the building and the limited architecture of the building in this particular case, and I do have to say once again, the exemption that council did provide at, at some point to the property directly across the street, that listing it would require us to do at least a Heritage Impact Statement. It does provide up to 60 days for council to assess it. And I would say the likelihood of pursuing a designation, although we may hear otherwise, is fairly high. And at the very least, it's something that's new and not there today and not necessary in this particular case.
Okay, thank you. I'll have a question of staff, I don't know if now is the time or-
We'll come back at the end.
Thank you.
Counselor Gazzola?
Yeah, I really wanted to deal with staff, but I want, while you're here, is this question of the fact that the city exempted it and therefore we have no, if I remember correctly, the city just did not deal with it at the time. The city, the Rockway Center is, we're in the process of, of assessing what needs to be done there and we're looking at certain situations. But I don't think it was a matter of, that the council of the day said, no, take it off the list. the list. Because I think plans, if I'm not wrong, I think plans of staff and the Heritage Committee is that someday the Rockway Centre does qualify for, first for listing and then designation.
I do have the minutes here of that meeting. I could refer to them. It specifically says, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gazola, if I may, that no action be taken to list the Rockway Centre on the city municipal heritage or designate it in any part.
This is no action be taken at that time. I don't think that is stating that it covers the totality of it. The other point I wanted to make, too, is that from my understanding, it's not a question of how much, how much criteria is required. Is it eighty percent of the criteria, fifty percent? From what I understand, if there's any criteria that applies, it makes properties eligible to be listed. And finally, you're quite frankly saying, trust us...
Are we focusing on questions, Counselor Gazola?
I'm done my questions.
Okay, then we'll come back.
Thank you for correcting me, too, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. Counselor Fernandez.
Thank you. Mr. Labresh, you were talking about the limited age of this building, so it's sixty years old. Would it be fair to say that most buildings that are heritage, that have been listed on this list, were sixty years old at one certain point in time and may have been of limited age and value, too?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, of course, probably over fifty percent of the households in this city are, so I think the list's got to expand.
The list has to expand, is that what you said? Yeah, okay. And I would agree with you...
Well, if it does, then I think you'll have a larger delegation out of council at some point.
Definitely we would. I guess, and I'm trying to make sure that I'm staying on point with questions, there is some conversation here about the garages at the back, which have been added on. Is it my understanding that the garages at the back are what, in your client's position, are what diminished the value of this property or changed the value of this property? Is that what I'm understanding from what you're saying?
Through Mayor Verbanovic to Counselor Fernandez, he bought the property with the garages already existing, so it's not a question of buyer beware, it was obvious. The garages are three to four bays essentially, there's a storage bay. They are a hindrance because it's a large brick structure to accommodate more parking on the site. So at the very least, they'd have to come down. The garages are different brick style than the rest of the house, it's obvious, so...
So if you, if they were, if it was able, possible to remove the garages because they were an add-on, would you see that this building has a higher value than in turn, for heritage, than as long as the garages stay attached?
I don't think it's neither here nor there. It depends on the eye of the beholder at the time. I just, I just think, you know, in a further state of concern that, why we're sort of aggressively dealing with this now, which is unfortunate given the circumstances with this particular property. And I don't make that statement lightly, that there's lots of houses in good repair that are sixty years old in this city. And if you're picking this one, then I think fairly you've got to pick at others. If you're exempting this one across the street, then you've got to exempt this one on the other side of the street. So I'm feeling somewhat frustrated with dealing with a property of limited age. And I know, and I think Mr. Faraz is feeling this more, even more so now hearing this discussion, he feels somewhat penalized with keeping this building in good repair. Leaving it derelict or to go sideways, you know, is encouraged by these types of things. Enlisting the property is not helpful in this particular case. I, you know, I admit upfront, I'm not a heritage expert. I'm a land use planner with over twenty-five years of experience in Ontario, a lot of it in this region. And I don't respectfully find a lot of redeeming heritage factors to this building, other than, boy, it's been kept nice and good repair. But lots of households in this city fortunately have, and I would leave it at that.
Okay. And certainly, I think that we are very grateful when homeowners, property owners, take care of their properties, whether it's heritage or not, but certainly anything that has some age and some significance and a story to tell, it's great, much more appreciated. I guess my last question would be, although you say that there is no plan, imminent plan to demolish and to build, everything that you are showing in your package indicate that that is something that you're talking about. You're talking about consolidation, assembly of properties, site plan pursuant. You've quoted quite a number of chapters and verses here from our official plan. So would it be reasonable to, for council or myself, to expect that Mr. Faraz has full intention to demolish and redevelop this site in the near future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the councillor, I thought we'd offer that as some comfort and not cause us more angst in the process, but I think it's, it is being upfront, and Mr. Faraz always has been. There are the same redevelopment opportunities for this property and the block that I show, I think, on page three and four of our letter this evening, as does the Rockway Facility Centre. I have reason to believe, and it's in comments, that there are higher and better and redevelopment opportunities for the Rockway Centre that were part of council of the day's decision. Why is it okay then and on that property, but not on Mr. Faraz's? I don't think, in respect to that, your question is necessarily fair, again, respectfully.
Okay. You're doing a great job of defending your client's property, which is exactly what you should be doing. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Counselor Iannidis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. Thanks, Mr. Labresh, for coming in. One of the questions I wanted to ask you was basically, how many years have you been a planner? And you said mostly in the region. My question, one of my questions deals with, one of my questions deals with, in particular, is through your practice, how often have you come across potential clients who may have looked at properties and bypassed properties because they saw that it was listed or designated as heritage?
Through Mayor Verbanovic, through Counselor Iannidis, I would say there's two or three projects a year that are involved in some way, shape, or form with heritage restraints and constraints. Many of them are pretty obvious when you're dealing with a two-hundred-year-old structure that's been kept in good repair. And as a land use planner, at the end of the day, there are provincial policies that override everything else in those particular cases. I think the word that's often used in policies and stems from provincial policies is significant, 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 keeps being repeated. And that's somewhat open-ended and, I know, open to interpretation. But again, I think if we start interpreting significant as meaning homes and buildings that are fifty, sixty, maybe upwards of seventy to eighty years old as necessarily significant, I think there's a lot of development opportunities and investment that's going to be improperly stifled in those situations.
Okay. My other question deals with that block that you have squared off, and I don't, I can't recall how the area looks like, but I kind of do. The homes around there, are they all within the same age?
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic, to Counselor Iannidis, the homes are built in that block, which is, I think, outlined in green. Built in the, in the fifties, sorry, built in the sixties and seventies.
Sixties and seventies, okay. And based on your professional opinion, too, how many households do you think, just give me a quote, that you think would be roughly in the City of Kitchener about this age?
If I may, conservatively, at least a third of the households, at least. Probably more than that.
Do you think those one-third would deserve the same listing designation as well?
I would say no.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor Verbanovic, when the time's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to remove this property from...
Well, I'm coming to you for the deferral, so you can add it on to your list. That's all the questions we have. Thank you, Mr. Labresh.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have four more delegations. Our next delegation is Kay Alge.
I have some slides that were sent. Let me see those. Yeah, my name's Kay Alge. I'm president of the North Waterloo branch of Architectural Conservancy, Ontario. ACO is a provincial charity which promotes the conservation and adaptive reuse of structures, districts, and landscapes of architectural, historical, or cultural significance. So first of all, I want to say a big thank you to council, to Heritage Kitchener Committee, and to Heritage Kitchener's heritage staff, especially Michelle Drake, for the tremendous work you've done to add properties to your municipal heritage register. In the 2014 alone, you added eighty-one properties to that listing, as well as naming fifty-five cultural heritage landscapes. So this will be the fourth time that ACO has spoken to you about adding properties to the municipal heritage register. And several times in the past, council has voted to exclude one or two, sometimes even eleven, properties from the list because there were objections from the property owners. This puzzles me. The legislation is really very clear. The provincial policy statement says, significant built heritage resources and significant cultural heritage landscapes shall be conserved. You know, it says shall be conserved, it's not may be conserved unless the owner has concerns, or might be conserved unless we want to see if a development opportunity comes along. No, the provincial policy statement says council has an obligation to conserve significant built heritage resources. And the courts take this obligation quite seriously. One of the most famous cases is out of St. Wachem Church in the town of Lakeshore, near Windsor, Ontario. And the owner of the church, the Roman Catholic Diocese of London, wanted to demolish it. A group of parishioners, including one David Tremblay, asked the town to designate it, as it was an important symbol of the spiritual and cultural life of the local French-speaking community. But the town refused to designate over the owner's objection, and the matter ended up in division court. The judgment chastised the town for its failure to carry out the purpose of the Ontario Heritage Act. That's your legal obligation. Court battles and countless hearings cost the town hundreds of thousands of dollars over several years. And in the end, the church was designated, as the parishioners had asked. Despite the very thorough communication process that Kitchener Heritage Staff used, some owners still worry that listing their building will tie their hands, that they won't be able to renovate the interior, add an elevator, change the color of the paint, the roof, et cetera. It's just not true, as you can see from the bread-up block, which is a listed property. The only thing listing really does is stop quick demolitions. Approval of demolition applications can be delayed, as you've heard, as much as sixty days, to give you, council, time to consider whether you want to take the time and give it the extra protection of designation or let the building go. So I'm puzzled why, in the past, council has sometimes voted to disregard advice from Heritage Kitchener, your Citizen Advisory Committee on Heritage Matters, and from heritage staff, and remove a property from the proposed additions to the municipal heritage register. Imagine there must be lots of other instances where there's provincial directives about matters which the city just follows. So I'm puzzled why heritage should be any different. For example, if there was a provincial directive that said environmentally sensitive areas shall be protected, and a citizen owning an area denoted as wetland, which staff and advisers said was significant to our water supply, if that citizen came to you and asked you to declare it not a wetland, not environmentally significant, well, I just can't imagine council doing this. So why should it be different with heritage? Why would you choose to disregard all the research, all the study that heritage staff and the municipal heritage committee has put into each and every one of these recommendations? However, as I said, that's what happened in the past, and hopefully it won't happen tonight, and it won't happen in the future. I did want to talk briefly about four properties, but I'll skip Aaron Street. Well, this is the Krug Factory, which is a landmark, very showcase of the industrial vernacular style. Glasgow Street, 535 Park Street, a great example of the brutalist architectural style. But I especially wanted to mention 2481 Kingsway Drive, because Carl and Ruth Dare from Dare Foods were longtime members of the ACO North Waterloo branch and very generous donors to our branch. So I'm sure Carl would be very pleased to see his legacy protected. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Great, thank you. We have one question for you, Counselor Singh.
Yeah, thank you, Kay. And thank you for presenting your delegation, and I can appreciate the position that you're taking. And I share that they, you know, we need to preserve and protect segments, components of our history in architecture. Earlier, delegate raised a point of interpretation of significant heritage character. What do you classify significant?
It doesn't matter what I classify, it's what the Act says, and it's quite clearly laid out.
So based on that, the Act says significant, and it says you show, as you said. It doesn't say you may or you might. And you raised another point about, give an example with the environment aspect of it. It's a clear definition in the environment of what's environmentally protect, you know, significant or not. I think it's hard to have a gray area in that regard, where this is subject to interpretation. And I think I want to refute some of the comments that you made, that council has to be reflective and balanced on the decision before us, because there isn't a very straightforward guideline as to what property really is or should or be designated or not, or listed or not. So we have to apply that approach. But I wanted to give you that opportunity to...
Counselor Singh, get to a question, please.
Yeah, I wanted to give you that opportunity to outline what you might think is significant. So if you want to take a moment, you can, and it may help me to make a decision when looking at today's agenda.
Right. Well, as I said before, it's not my personal opinion, but there are criteria laid out by the province, and those form the basis of the checklist that you see in the properties before you. There are nine criteria altogether. As someone mentioned earlier, only one of those is required to be considered significant. For example, if it was a prize, if it was a governor general winning, award-winning building, I think that might be all we would ever consider. So it only has to be one of those nine. And I think the fact that the list has been reviewed and documented by staff and also reviewed by the Heritage Committee should give you some confidence in feeling that these truly are significant, that there is cultural heritage value in these properties. We're not going the full point of designating at this point, so the test doesn't have to be as rigorous.
But council does retain that final opinion, correct?
Pardon me?
But council does retain that final opinion, regardless of what the recommendation may be from an advisory committee or staff, but council does retain that final assessment as to if it should be or shouldn't it be?
It's your interpretation of the Act. I mean, the provincial policy statement says these resources shall be conserved.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I just, I want to put a question back, you put the question to us, as to why we would take some of these houses off the list. So I want to give you a hypothetical example. There's a couple of properties in my ward on Bridge Street. They're, in my opinion, they're among the less impressive examples of architecture, but notwithstanding, considering the homeowner's opinion, supposing a homeowner had been waiting, for example, for Highway Seven forever to come through because they knew that a home fronting onto Bridge Street would one day be redeveloped, and that was their nest egg, that was their family's prosperity, to sell that piece of property for redevelopment. You think it's fair for the city to blanket, cover that, say, sir, you can't redevelop it because we decide that it's of cultural significance?
I think at this, it's important to remember, this is a listing, not a designation process.
Okay, but let's be fair, why are we listing it?
Pardon me?
Why is it getting listed? What's the intent of listing it in the first place?
Because, because in the norm, because as Mr. Drake pointed out, normally, there's not a lot of time to look at the, to do the full study of the property there. So it's to buy some time, they have sixty days to consider. And, you know, in some of these cases, it may come down that you feel it isn't as significant as, you may feel that's not the best option. But right now, all you're doing is saying it has value, we want to flag it.
Okay. I apologize, my question was somewhat rhetorical, I just wanted to make it clear that we're not, it's not as simple as a black and white. we're not, it's not as simple as a black and white, whether it has significance or not. There's the property owner's side of it. Thank you.
Okay. That's it for the question?
That's it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elgie. Next person is Lain Berman.
Hello, council. Thank you, Mayor Veronovic, for having me tonight. I wanted to talk tonight about 111 Aaron Street West, which you may be looking to defer a decision on. 111 Aaron Street West is a little bit different than buildings that were built in the 50s and 40s and 30s. In fact, this building was built in 1882. This is the Krug Building. And I wanted to address some of the things that have been said about this building recently that I found kind of odd. The building is not a landmark. This is what I've heard. It is a landmark. It stood since 1882 in our neighborhood, one hundred and thirty-three years old. The definition of a landmark, an object of feature, sorry, object or feature of a landscape or town that is easily seen and recognized from a distance, especially one that enables somebody to establish their location. I think that meets the criteria. The industrial vernacular style is not defined or recognizable architecture structure. In Kitchener, this architecture style actually defines all of our factories. If you look towards the Grab Shoe Factory, the Brighton Block, the Tannery, the Airbus Building, Beamer Box Building, they all share the same architecture as the Krug Building. It's very popular and culturally significant to Kitchenerites. It's really the only factory architecture we know in the downtown core. The style is not notable, rare, or unique. It is rare, unique, and notable. There are only a few of these buildings left, and to have a collection within such close proximity in the downtown core is certainly notable. The building is not in good condition. I find that hard to believe when there's three hundred employees who go to work there every day. If it wasn't in good condition, somebody would be on it, I would hope. The property is not associated with a belief person, activity, or organization that is unique within the city. Hartman Krug and Albert Ruby started this company. These men have huge historical clout in our city. Hartman's name still can be seen on the side of the building. At one time, this building was the center of furniture manufacturing in Canada. People from all over Canada, the United States, came to Kitchener to see furniture shows with Krug as the anchor. It was once the largest manufacturer, furniture manufacturer in the British Empire. Imagine that, the British Empire. And I just heard this morning how businesses set up, on CBC, how businesses set up in our downtown and kind of have a lifestyle or a lifecycle of three to six years. Hundred and thirty-five years in business in the same location. Can't count anybody else in there like that. This building has stood for a hundred and thirty-three years. There is not one single person in this city that is older than 111 Aaron Street. Every single resident currently residing in the city was born after this building was built. Thus, it is part of all of our lives and is a landmark to our skyline. The building has watched as we've sent young men via our rail line off to war during the Second World War, the First World War, the Armenian-Azerbaijani War, the Russian Civil War, and the Second World War. Mothers, women, sent their husbands and sons off to war from the train station in the shadow of the Krug Building. And they watched, some in joy, some in sadness, when the men came home from war, and women, might I add. The Krug Building was also the backdrop for Queen Elizabeth's first visit in 1973. I brought a picture. The building has watched countless other buildings suffer their demise, whether it's at the hand of the fire of the Berlin Felt Company, which happened in 1904, or the hands of the wrecking ball as the former City Hall. It has also watched a former Denso factory across the road, and the Brighton Block, and the Lang Tannery were made into amazing examples of what can happen to old heritage buildings. I'd like to take you just one minute. I know I only have one left. Tell you about the company of Krug. The owners of Krug have always been in touch with their employees. They recognize the assets their employees could be in this building. During the 1980s, when manufacturing tanked, Krug only let off two employees, only because they refused to do modified work. They didn't want to lay off a single worker, so they invested. And in 1980s dollars, almost a quarter million dollars into their facility, they painted the floors, they painted the ceilings, they painted the walls, they painted the seventeen hundred windows. Once they were done at 111 Aaron's, they moved their employees out to Stratford to complete some concrete work. Why was it so important? Because Krug employees were like family, cared about their building. This is an important piece of our past, and in fact, it's an important piece of our present. Three hundred employees work at that facility every day. I asked one of the senior managers of Krug why they don't sell the building and reap the benefits of the white-hot downtown real estate market. He said, "There isn't anywhere else in this city that has this much square footage as well laid out as 111 Aaron Street. It's four floors and a huge space." This building should not only be listed, it should be designated a heritage building. Thank you.
Counselor Yanetski.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. I didn't catch your name at the beginning?
Lain Berman.
Lain Berman?
Yes.
And are you related in any way to the family of the Krug furniture?
Not at all.
Not at all. Thank you very much.
Counselor Marsh.
I just want to thank you, Lain, for coming in and for your continued passion for our neighborhood. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Got one. Lain, I'm just wondering, and I agree with you that this is a hugely important building. But my question to you is, do you think that, especially when you've outlined, you know, all the things that the Krug family, or that the, I guess, Ruby family have done with respect to ensuring the building's ongoing existence, their investment in the property and so on, that if, up to this point at least, we haven't been able to have a sit-down with them to work through the issues and get them on board, is there not merit in deferring in order to continue to have those discussions? I mean, there's no indication that they're planning on shutting down, demolishing anything. I mean, as you've outlined, they've been a good, responsible property owner. Would it not merit having those kinds of discussions and keep the dialogue open?
To answer your question, Mayor Veronovic, I would say if I were a business owner and my property were being listed, that I might want to sit down at the table really quickly. I don't know what adding a deferral would do for that. I'm not sure. Maybe staff could answer the question as to how often or how long we've been trying to contact the owners of the building. But I would think that there is a finite amount of time when the emails bounce back or somebody's communication is being broken down, that they're not willing to sit at the table. That's a different story.
Okay, and to my knowledge, we haven't reached that point yet. Counselor Davy?
Thank you, Lain, for your presentation. Just one question. What is, you're not related. If you know what I'm asking, what is your, what's your interest in this particular building? Like, where does it stem from?
In this building? I'm the co-chair of the Mount Hope Brighter Park Neighborhood Association. This building has been on my Jane's Walk for the last three years, two years? Two years. I've done a lot of research on the building, and I think it's one of our oldest buildings that we have in our city that we have an opportunity to start the process of designating with a listing. I prefer to look at it a different way, that this is the stepping stone towards a designation as opposed to it's just a listing.
Thank you, and I would agree. It's one of my favorite buildings in the city.
Counselor Singh.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. And speaking with your passion, I can see and share why this is when I was seeing earlier that some properties just, you know, jump out, showing this, you know, why they're more architecturally significant. The earlier delegates show an example of the Brighton Development, where the building fronting on King was redeveloped to more modern design, but didn't really show the backend, which has been preserved, rightly so, and will continue to carry and signify that distinct character of that building. Do you think a building of this massing, this size, does, entire component of it needs to be preserved and designated? Or do you think a component could be identified and say, "This segment can, as long as it continues to show that true character," whereas still allowing for additional development? The reason why I ask that question is because that's perhaps what a deferral could allow, carry on that conversation. Do you think there's a benefit in that, looking through that lens?
Well, I think that, I mean, that's a very valid question, and I think that maybe if you, there was ability to have conversation, which it doesn't sound like there has been, with the owner of the building, that that might be something that we do, or the city does. But it doesn't seem to be readily happening right now. I feel that perhaps designating the entire property is something that would want to, you'd want to work with the property owner on. I don't know what else the city can do or what leverage the city has to make that conversation happen. It is probably one of the most important buildings with the, I'm not sure what the technical name is for it, with the Airbus Building. Some of our oldest buildings that we have in our city that are in pristine shape. I mean, these are, aside from 111 down towards the Weber Street widening area, there's lots of bricks missing and things like that. And I understand if portions of the building need to come down. But that building as a whole has stood there for a hundred and thirty-three years. It's a significant amount of time.
But I appreciate your comment, saying that there does need to be a dialogue with the homeowner.
Absolutely. But if you don't have a dialogue, if you're asking somebody and they're not responding to you, when do you just stop that dialogue? Like, do you just defer and defer and defer, or do we say, "Okay, this is the day"?
Well, that's a decision we'll have to make today. Thanks.
Counselor Yanetis.
I just want to thank Lain for coming in. I don't disagree with you. I think this is, has historical significance in our community. But the way I look at it is, if we can get the owner and build a cooperation, and we don't need to force our hand to designate this, they wouldn't want to be willing, and that's where I'm looking at this.
Sorry, if I could just answer that. This is about listing, not about the designating. My preference would be in the future to designate, but that's me as a lonely citizen. We're talking about listing the building, and if you've tried numerous times to get that dialogue going, which I'm going to assume that Ms. Drake and the Heritage Committee have, where do you draw the line? Do you just say, "Oh, well, they're not returning our phone calls. We'll wait"? Or do we move forward on it? I don't know. That's a decision you, council can make.
Counselor Etherington.
Mr. Berman, thanks for coming in. It's wonderful to listen to your opinions. Do you think that listing or designating that building would prevent further future discussions with the owner?
I don't know. I mean, and I don't think anybody could answer that question because nobody sat with the owner to understand the position that the owner's in. It's a difficult place to be. I mean, you designate a building, and all it does is prevent you from tearing the building down, giving council enough notice to take action on it. Sorry, as far as listing the building goes, not designating. It's hard to say. I don't see the owner of the building here today. I could be wrong, but it's a difficult discussion to have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions. Thank you, Mr. Berman. The next delegation is Ted Parkinson.
Thanks. So I'm Ted Parkinson, and I'm here to speak about the same building as that... And I'm actually co-chair of the Neighborhood Association, Mount Hope Brighter Park, along with Lain. And I've lived in the area for about seventeen years, and I've co-led about six or seven Jane's Walks around the area. And one thing I found unique about our neighborhood, the Mount Hope Brighter Park, is that it was one of the first industrial suburbs of Kitchener. And you think of it now, it's right downtown, but at the time, it was built, it was built, you know, on the other side of the tracks, and there are all these historic buildings, some of which aren't left, but the, sorry, been mentioned, the Brighton Block and the Tannery and other buildings. And so it was quite historic, and in fact, it's a history of manufacturing in the area. The furniture and the rubber factory and the button factories. In fact, today, if you go under the new Weber Street widening under the bridge, they have purposely designated the textile industry and a lot of those historic industries. Those are woven into the design of the new Weber Street underpass. And so it shows that the history is important even today, and the Krug furniture stands as part of that. I have been to a few council meetings in the past, and it seems, I mean, you can, you know, there's arguments for and against listing, but it always seems to come down to what happens when you list. You give council an extra thirty days. That's really what happens. And there's, you know, a lot of talk about maybe it prevents some development from happening. But it seems that, as Kay said earlier, we have a criteria. The Heritage Committee studies all these buildings in detail. And then all that has to happen is an owner has to come and say, "I don't think it should be listed," and then council doesn't list it. I've seen that vote several times. And, or we just defer it. It seems to me that if we want to protect the heritage of our city, which I think we do, we should list it. Because what happens? It doesn't defer anything from happening. It basically gives an extra thirty days. The example's been given of the Brighton Block, and I also write the blog for our neighborhood. Well, the Brighton Block is on the list. And Craig Beatty took us through a few years ago, and I took a lot of photos inside. It's quite a fascinating place. Well, if you look at the building now, they tore down about six structures that came after and put it back to its, I think, four, you know, oldest parts of it, and it looks brilliant, and they've renovated it. Yet it was still on the list. It didn't prevent six, I think at least six portions being torn down, and it didn't prevent it being developed. The Krug Street factory, if it doesn't stay as a furniture factory, it could be turned into condos or an office building or a mixed-use building. Because it's such an open space, you could develop almost anything out of it and still keep the building with its history and bricks and all of those things. So I think that it's time for the council to say, "Yeah, we'll put it on a list." And what does that really do? It puts it on a list to give council more time if somebody came along and decided to tear it down. So I think, I would hope that you would do the right thing. And it would be a devastating cultural and historic blow to our neighborhood if it were, if it were torn down at some point. And so I would just hope you would listen to the Heritage Committee and add it to that list. I think that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you for coming in. There don't appear to be any questions.
Great.
And our last delegation is Mr. Rick Holdenby. Welcome, Rick.
Saw you this morning in matter of taste, your worship.
That is correct. Busted. No.
Your worship, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rick Holdenby. I'm a downtown Kitchener resident, professor at the School of Architecture in Cambridge, curator and director of the Building Waterloo Region Project, and executive editor and co-author of Images of Progress, the volume cited repeatedly in the proposed inventory listings. My areas of research focus on industrial architecture and post-war modern architecture in Waterloo region. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I hope at least most of you know of my interest in the architecture and design of our city. I am particularly motivated tonight by the continued losses of heritage buildings in Kitchener. I am also sensitive to the fact that the highly desirable aim of urban intensification must not be accomplished at the cost of wholesale loss of important and historic buildings that give a city its identity and connect it to its past. But I come here tonight to make two particular points. I want to speak first regarding the importance of including industrial buildings on the heritage inventory. I have argued that industrial architecture is the vernacular of this city. We have been too used to see these buildings as background or merely functional, hence largely disposable. But the factories do lie at the heart of the built culture of the city whose motto is "Ex industria prosperitas." Industrial buildings were widely dispersed in the urban landscape in the nineteenth century, integrated in the city fabric to a greater degree than in other Ontario towns. In the two decades leading up to the First World War, the urban landscape of Kitchener was dramatically transformed when clusters of enormous industrial buildings rose and spread, dominating the streetscapes and the skylines of the city. I am delighted to see the Krug and Airbus factories on the proposed lists of additions to the inventory and urge council to retain them. It is worth reminding ourselves that Airbus began in 1912 as Dominion Tire. It is worth reminding ourselves that Airbus began in 1912 as Dominion Tire. The building was designed by Albert Kahn, architect of Detroit/Walkerville, Ontario, the greatest industrial architect the world has ever known, the inventor of the modern factory and of modern architectural practice. If Airbus is not worthy of listing in our inventory, then no building in this city is. At risk of stating the obvious, I would also point out that such industrial buildings from the early modern age are absolutely adaptable to new uses, including residential, commercial, institutional. We have many exceptional examples of this principle here in the region of Waterloo. Secondly, I wish to support the inclusion of buildings that were built as part of yet another great transformation of our city that took place after World War II. The period 1946 to 1973 saw a massive change. We built new schools, universities, churches, libraries, banks, post offices, hospitals, factories, the first high-rise apartment buildings, office towers, shopping malls, and highways. This period produced a staggering number of buildings, many of very high quality. Virtually all of them were deliberately modern in style, which presents a clear point of continuity with the tradition of industrial building in Kitchener, since the unadorned beauty of industrial architecture was the very inspiration for modern design. Local architectural firms designed all but a few of these buildings, representing an unprecedented moment of strength in local design culture, a moment which has not been repeated. This moment in our history should be a point of pride, yet little value seems to be attached to these buildings, as we've seen tonight, because they do not fit the image of an historic building. They do not look so old or different in the sense that a Victorian or Edwardian building does. They are too modern. But heritage is only what is left by us to our descendants. We have lost many buildings from the post-war period. Many others have been destroyed by insensitive renovation in addition. There are but a few buildings from this era in the list you are reviewing today. I firmly support their inclusion and urge the city to be proactive in adding other significant structures from this period to your inventory. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Holdenby. And it looks like there are no questions for you either.
Oh, good.
So with that, I will now ask Counselor Janetski, I believe you're the council rep on this committee? So I'll ask you to move the list, and then I'll come to Counselor Ionitis for the deferrals that he indicated he was going to be moving. Counselor Janetski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Heritage Committee has recommended a number of recommendations and clauses here. And what we're going to have to do, Mr. Mayor, is that there's a list of those who have been sort of automatically put on, that there's been no issues, and then there's about another half a dozen or so that have been identified separately, so they could be discussed and voted on individually, as outlined by the clerk. So I'm dealing with clause number two, that pursuant to Section 27 of the Ontario Heritage Act, the following properties be listed on the municipal heritage register, each as a non-designated property of cultural heritage value or interest, and in accordance with the respective statement of significance as outlined in the Appendix A of the Community Services Staff Report, CSD 15040. And there's a list of 20, and I'm going to identify, Mr. Mayor, for the listening audience on the TV, and they're all in alphabetical order. 55 Aberdeen Road, 112 Benton Street, 13 Bridge Street East, 50 Brookside Crescent, 500 Dune Valley Drive, 92 Edgehill Drive, 200 Fairway Road South, 1541 Fisher-Halman Road, 36 Francis Street South, 101 Glasgow/149 Strange Street, 314 Glasgow Street, 600 Heritage Drive, 4336 King Street East, 2481 Kingsway Drive, 398 New Dundee Road, 1478 New Dundee Road, 350 Park Street, 35 Rose Street, 9 Tyson Drive/7 Bridge Street East, 15 Tyson Drive, 80-86 Union Boulevard/571 York Street, and 1254 Union Street. And then there are four, six, eight others, sorry, six others that have the same title, but they're different properties, and I'm going to just go through those, those, be looked at individually.
Well, Counselor Janetski, I'm going to take all of it as one motion, because we also know that deferrals are coming as one motion. So if you can just list those other properties?
Okay.
Your intention is to include them, correct?
Yes. Three to eight. And so basically, again, under Section 27 of the Heritage Act, the properties identified are 111 Aaron Street West, 418 Glasgow Street, 1333 King Street East, 825 King Street West, 160 Margaret Avenue, and 535 Park Street.
Okay. Thank you. So that's a total of 28 properties. Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Fernandez? Okay, so I'll now come to Counselor Ionitis, who was moving a deferral on some of them. Counselor Ionitis.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. My motion is that the listing of the following properties on the municipal heritage register be deferred pending further dialogue between staff and the property owners. And properties that I'm looking at here are 101 Glasgow Street/149 Strange Street, 111 Aaron Street West, 248 1 Kingsway Drive, and 535 Park Street, and also, sorry, 825 King Street West. And for the properties of 101 Glasgow and 149 Strange Street and of 111 Aaron Street, I want to set a deferral time sometime in September for those, because I think those are ones that have, that seem to want to have some action taken quickly. And as far as the other ones, I want to have those on indefinite time for now until staff can come up with a better dialogue with those owners.
Okay, so September 30th for those?
Sure.
First, for those two, and everything else indefinite. Okay, so does anybody want to speak just onto the issue of timing with respect to those? Counselor Fernandez?
Yeah, I just, I don't feel comfortable with the 111 Aaron Street, even if it is deferred till September. I just really think that we need to move forward on that. Mr. Holdenby made an excellent point on the value of that property.
Okay, I will deal with that one separately. Counselor Davy on timing?
Yes, actually, I'd just like to add, since we're doing a joint motion, if Counselor Ionitis has agreed, we save some time, I'd like to add 13 Bridge Street East to the deferral.
Are you amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay.
You know, Mayor Verbanovic, I want to add one more. Originally, I was going to ask for 133 King Street East to be removed, but I think I want to have that as well added to the deferral.
To the deferral, okay. 1333 King Street East, correct?
Correct.
So that we're clear, the ones that are being moved for deferral, and Madame Clerk, you can help me here if I'm incorrect, are 2481 Kingsway Drive, 1333 King Street East, 825 King Street West, 535 Park Street. Those are indefinite deferrals. And then 101 Glasgow Street, 149 Strange Street is until September 30th, and 111 Aaron Street is until September 30th on the deferrals. And, oh, sorry, 13 Bridge East, thank you, is indefinite as well. And so the, I will deal with 111 Aaron Street West, because it's been asked that that one be dealt with separately from a timing perspective. Okay? Is everyone clear on that? 1333, so I'll deal with Scott separately on that one. Okay, so we'll deal with 111 Aaron Street West. Recorded votes? Sure. Sorry? So 111 Aaron Street West, if you're in favor of deferral till September 30th, so staff can have additional dialogue, you would vote yes. If you're not in favor of deferral, you would vote no. All those opposed? Okay, that does not carry, so that one we'll be dealing with tonight. 1333 King Street East. All those in favor? All those opposed? And that deferral carries. The balance of the deferrals? Oh, sorry, okay. I can, I wasn't going to, but nobody's asked for it, but you're asking for it, so we'll deal with the Airbus one. 101 Glasgow Street, 149 Strange Street to September 30th. All those in favor? Those opposed? That deferral carries. And then the balance of them. All those in favor? Those opposed? And those have been deferred? And then the balance of the report, which would be the... Oh, no, speaking to it, yeah, I'm going to come to them. Counselor Etherington, you want to speak to these? Or question, actually, before that, there were some more questions of staff, so maybe we'll do that first. Counselor Etherington, did you have questions of staff or just comments?
Just comments.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Counselor Janetski, questions of staff or comments? No, that's fine. Counselor Davy, questions of staff? Go ahead.
Thank you. The resident at 9 Tyson/7 Bridge Street East was in contact with staff. Wondering if, I'm wondering if we could get, staff could describe briefly what their concern is with the listing.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic. I believe in summary, the owner's concern was just with additional restrictions being imposed on the property. The owner referenced that the property is already in the floodplain, so regulated by the GRCA and subject to our existing use zoning. Both the GRCA regulations as well as the zoning already limit the owner's potential in terms of any form of demo and redevelopment, and so I believe the owner was just concerned about another layer that further limits those or increases those restrictions. The owner also referenced that he had invested and will be continuing to invest into the property, given the restrictions, and does not have any intent to demolish the building.
Thank you. So I spoke with Mr. Vautour, who wished he could be here, but he's not terribly comfortable speaking in front of council. I can assure you that this gentleman has zero development interest. He just does not want his property to be listed. So I would ask that this 9 Tyson/7 Bridge be removed.
Okay, so I'll deal with that one separately. Counselor Marsh, questions of staff or comments?
I have any questions, or is it time to move on?
Okay. On these properties?
Yeah, thank you. With regard to the deferred decisions regarding the properties that were recommended tonight.
Okay, those have been dealt with, so...
That's right.
So we're done with those?
Yeah. So I can just tell you what my motion is, and then you can tell me if it's too late. So in the case of deferred decisions regarding properties recommended by staff and heritage Kitchener on June 1st, 2015, for listing on the municipal heritage register, be it resolved that for the properties in question, any demolition permit application decision period be extended to 60 business days.
Okay. I'm not sure that we have the legal authority to do that, but I guess I'll ask...
That's not legal?
I'll ask Ms. McDonald to answer that question.
I would agree with your worship that I don't believe we have the authority to change that timeframe.
Okay.
That's a shame. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Etherington, comments?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I completely agree with the heritage champions that we have here tonight. I think we need to get real about heritage, instead of taking every opportunity to oppose attempts to preserve our heritage properties, or instead mouth empty platitudes of support and then go ahead and flatten properties. I can't resist pointing out that delays and merely-mouthed phrases like intention to designate, intention to list, results in what we see next door to City Hall, where we're in the process of demolishing the Mayfair and the neighboring property. I'm concerned that it might even be the next property as well, as we play demolition derby with downtown heritage buildings. After listening to Professor Holdenby tonight, I even changed my mind and opposed all deferrals, because I can see exactly what he is getting at. So I would certainly approve in totality everything that I can see on the list that has managed to avoid our earlier deferrals. We have to do something in Kitchener to change our record on protecting historic buildings. Thank you.
Counselor Janetski?
Thank you. I would echo Counselor Etherington's comments as well. As a member of the Heritage Committee, I too am concerned on the properties that have come forward. Sure, we have adopted and carried some 20 properties, but we've also deferred a half a dozen or so, some with dates and others indefinitely. I voted against all of them except one, and I don't support it, because when you have them indefinitely, it creates that sense of, well, let's not worry about it now, we'll worry about it later, and before you know it, another building will be coming down or an application for demolition will come forward. I'm not saying that it will, but the potential certainly is there. So we struggle to try to preserve. I welcome the support from the heritage people who have come forward, from Rick Holdenby to KLG to others in the past that have come to fight the cause of heritage preservation. Sure, we may not have buildings as beautiful as those in Europe and other places around the world, but this is all we have, and this is the best that we have, and we've got to preserve what the best that we have. And we try to do it as best as we can. And if we don't, we'll have nothing left. So thank you to those who are supportive, and the fight still goes on.
Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I just want to again remind people that when we can agree to disagree, but we should do so respectfully and not with such harsh words sometimes. I think that doesn't help with our council moving forward. I want to say that with respect to 111 Aaron Street, I voted... Um, I wanna say that, uh, with respect to one eleven Aaron Street, um, I voted for the deferral on the basis that I thought there should be an opportunity for discussion with the property owners to potentially bring them on board and, and be okay with the listing so that they could understand. I, I know that staff have reached out a number of times, but that was why I was supportive of the deferral. Tonight, I will support, uh, the, um, putting that one on the listing, because I do believe that it has strong heritage value, and we need to continue to, um, protect that. But I think for me, I always look at heritage properties on an individual basis, and I think we do have to sometimes take the property owner's, um, opinion into account. Um, we, and we also need to look at, we're talking about, uh, we talk a lot about how, how much we've demolished or how much we haven't saved. We forget to look at how much we saved, and if we look at that chart that Michelle had showed us earlier, there was four hundred plus properties that, uh, and I, my numbers may be off a little, um, that we have been able to list through the, that pro, this process, and I think that that's a huge success for our community, and when sometimes we need to focus on tho, those. I know that we've lost some significant buildings along the way, but we do, uh, take the time to work on properties and, and try and work with the, um, property owners to come up with a, um, so that both, both people, so both the property owner and the city can move forward with, uh, with the listing, and I think that that's important. As for the deferrals for the rest of them, I don't see them going on indefinitely. I think they're on staff's radar, um, as we've heard, and we can continue to watch those properties, and, and I would, I would assume through this, um, motion that we would, um, be directing staff to continue to pursue, um, discussions with the property owners and bring back, uh, at the appropriate time, either, um, their recommendation, or maybe they get the property owners on board, and then that can come forward to us at that time. Um, I'm optimistic that there will be some of these properties, um, that will be in agreement once they have a chance to have further dialogue, um, with staff, so, um, just wanna make sure... Yeah, and I just wanna come back to the point that we have been successful in saving a number of properties, and I think sometimes we need to look at our successes, not always look at, um, look at both sides of the story is probably the best way to put it. Thank you.
Councilor Gazola?
Yeah, I'll be very quick. I have supported, uh, all these properties, uh, throughout the, uh, discussions at Heritage Committee, and, uh, all the times that, that has come before us, I'm very supportive of, uh, of moving forward. It really bothers me that, uh, we do have this responsibility to protect our heritage and our history, and from what I've seen over the years, the lists of questionable items keeps growing larger and larger and larger, because it's very easy for the people to see if you just say, ah, but I don't want it, and, and it, and it goes away, but, uh, we, we don't have that right, and when it comes, I, I know it's a, it's a topic that a lot of people don't understand. People say, well, I, I own the property, I should be able to do whatever I want, it's my property. Well, it's unfortunate, or maybe fortunate, that when it comes to history and heritage, uh, and, and things, important things happen to your property, not just the age of the property or the architecture, but it's the events that occurred around the property, the people that were involved with it. When these things become important and be, become part of our history, well, un, unfortunately at that time, the owners of those properties lose a bit of their, of their rights, because then those, because of what has happened around those properties, it becomes a part of something that belongs to the entire community, to the entire region, to the entire world. And we, the, all we are asking for here is to be, to be listing. We're not saying, you know, in the fullness of time, I'm sure there are a lot of properties that we have on our list, that when we get down and do further examination and have a few thirty extra days to look at it, I'm sure many of the decisions at that time will, we will come to the point to say, uh, yes, there's a lot of benefits, but no, it's something that we have to let go, but we need that second opportunity to look at something. We asked for a second opportunity to look at the Mayfair, and I don't think we were really given that, and that's just one of the many examples. So, I would ask council to support all of these properties on the list. We're not tearing them down tomorrow, we're not tying all the owners' hands. We're just putting them on a special plateau, a special list, that we can have a second chance if we need to take it.
Councilor Davie?
Thank you. There's people that don't really have a whole lot of, uh, respect for heritage in general on one end of the spectrum, the other end of the spectrum where I'm also concerned that, uh, there are folks that would like to freeze the entire city in, in place, and that's not practical for things like intensification. Certainly there are, there are buildings, for example, Aaron's, I voted against the, uh, I voted against the deferral because I think that should be listed immediately. There's, there's no question that that building is unique, uh, there's nothing quite like it really. I mentioned it's one of my favorite buildings, 'cause it reminds me of my, of my favorite building, which is the tannery, and I can see fantastic possibilities for use of that building. It starts to break down for me when we, for, and there's that level of redundancy, um, especially in the smaller homes. Um, for example, there's the, there, there's a couple even in here of, of concerns where, um, it'll say rare example of building from the eighteen fifty-six plan of Bridgeport, but then there's three of them in here. So, if one or, or more of these property owners are not in agreement, uh, I, the question is to preserve our, our history and preserve our heritage, why do we need fifteen examples of the same thing, especially when it's at, potentially at the financial cost of the property owner? I think we need to be a little more, we need to be, the criteria has to have a slightly higher standard, especially on the smaller structures.
Councilor Singh?
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking, because I think I, I made my position quite clear through my questioning, but I got compelled to speak because of the unfair, uh, comparison with what we're talking about today with the Mayfair. So I'll start talking about that first. Mayfair would, that would have gone in the same direction had that property been listed or had it been designated. The comparison of that, I think, has no correlation to the, the protection, uh, of the heritage character. I think we would have done it had it not been a structural issue, so I think that's a unfair comparison. Beyond that, um, I, you know, I supported, uh, the deferral of properties where the homeowners had opposition, to allow for that conversation to take place, which allows for other fruitful direction to come from, and I think I raised one point where not all segments of the property need to be, uh, preserved, as long as a, a significant component of the heritage character can be preserved, but still allowing for progress, uh, to happen, I think that's a good blend of past and future and present. I, uh, and that's, that was the reason why I supported the deferral for one eleven Aaron's, because I wanted to, uh, allow for staff and the owners of that property, the principal owners of that property, property, to have that fruitful dialogue, but, uh, just because it was an approved doesn't mean I will not approve the, uh, or support the, uh, listen, the designation of listing. Uh, I think this property does, uh, outline significant character that needs to be preserved as part of our history. And similar to what was said in earlier, um, or, or through, uh, Councilor Scott Davie, that we have to be balanced when we look at a property. We need to ensure that, uh, I, I think he's already said it, so it, it doesn't serve to repeat it, but I will just quickly highlight, if you have five, six properties on a street and they all have the same character, you don't have to preserve them all, you need one or two to carry on that, uh, um, component of our history. Um, I will support what's before us that we will be, um, deciding on, apart from the deferral items. I think, uh, it allows for, uh, the listing to take place, because there hasn't been much opposition by those property owners. And the last point that I will make is, comparison to saying that the listing, it doesn't do much other than just align for a pause to the demolition process, um, I, I, I want us all to reflect, that's not the only, only process. Person can't demolish their property just out of will. It, it has to follow a certain procedure. They have to come and make an application, and out of that application, automatically there is a, there is a heritage assessment. So we have opportunity at that point to assess the building, to see if it, it should be demolished, or if it's, if it needs to be preserved. Um, so, anyways, I will support the remaining, um, items, um, because of the lack of opposition from property owners, ultimately, I will always speak up for the property owner rights.
Councilor Janetski?
Thank you, Mayor Verbenovic. Um, I guess the one point I just wanted to make is, I think over the term of last term and in this term, I think this council is, has probably listed or designated over ninety percent of the properties that came, that's come to our table. To me, that's, I think that's an incredible success record, and I think that's what should be the story.
Looks like, uh, all the other comments have been made, so I'll make my own. Um, I'll begin by saying, um, I, I think many people around this horseshoe and, and in our community have a passion for, uh, for heritage and, uh, ensuring that, uh, as much of our cultural and, uh, historic heritage, uh, be, uh, be preserved as possible. Regretfully, sometimes when, uh, these debates happen, uh, comments get made, rhetoric gets used, that isn't helpful to, uh, truly getting the, the real story out in terms of, um, what the community's, um, history around this has been. Without a doubt, regretfully, there have been some decisions that have occurred in the past, um, that have not been the kindest to, to heritage. The one that often gets, uh, gets raised and, and, and put up there is the old City Hall, and that was an unfortunate decision, but none of us were around the horseshoe at the time, none of us know what all the factors were that the council, uh, dealt with, and, um, at some point as a community, we need to look beyond that, take the lessons that are, are learned from that experience, and, and move forward as, as a community. I think we heard from one of the delegations earlier tonight that, um, eighty-one properties were, uh, added on to the, uh, heritage, uh, register in two thousand and fourteen, plus a number of properties through the cultural heritage, uh, landscape. That, in my view, is a, is a positive step forward. I also want to, um, focus on what is happening tonight, and tonight, we are approving, um, twenty-two out of twenty-eight properties to be added to the heritage register. Six are being deferred so that further dialogue can occur, and the reason I supported those deferrals was because I believe there's, you get more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. It's an old, uh, saying that I think all of us in this room have heard, and I believe that by continuing the dialogue, we stand a better chance of, uh, of working with people and getting them on board than to, um, than to simply move forward. Fundamentally, in some cases, it may have required us to move forward, but I think it would have been better, particularly in the case of manufacturing properties, at a time when we know manufacturing is already tenuous, to go and get into a confrontational situation with companies that, um, you know, I'm sure on a regular basis, they're making decisions about whether or not, uh, you know, what their operation should look like going forward. The final point that I wanna make is, is actually also state some facts about just heritage in the downtown, because it often gets, gets talked about, and in our downtown, in the urban growth boundary of the downtown, there are five hundred and fifty-seven properties. Of those five hundred and fifty-seven properties, a hundred and thirty-eight are actually active heritage properties. Eighty-one were previously listed, uh, listed as non-designated properties. Eighteen are properties individually designated as being of cultural heritage value. Thirty-nine are properties located within a heritage conservation district, either the Civic Center or the Victoria Park, uh, district, and designated as being of cultural heritage value, and three additional properties are ones that we're considering tonight. When you look at that, over twenty-five percent, or roughly twenty-five percent, of all the properties in the downtown, in fact, do have some sort of heritage designation. So I think when, you know, when people sometimes get frustrated and start talking about, uh, all the things we haven't done, I think it's important to also remember all the things that we have done positively as a community, and that's, that information that I just shared is part of that, and I think that's a, a record that this, uh, council and this community should be proud of. With that having been said, I will, um, support the properties that are on the list. Uh, I am disappointed that one isn't, uh, being deferred, but I'm also not about to start getting it caught up in some sort of, um, procedural, uh, conflict that I don't think will, uh, be helpful, and I think we're just gonna have to work extra hard with that, uh, property owner to get them to understand what the issues are, and hopefully not have any negative, uh, repercussions as a result of that. So with that, I presume a recorded vote has been called, and Scott has asked the nine Tyson Drive, seven Bridge Street East, um, be, not be included, uh, on the list, so I'll deal with that one first. And a recorded vote. So if you want it included, you vote yes, if you don't want it included, you vote no. You're, right, but the, the, the main motion is to list all of these. We're simply dealing with yours separately, and so, yes, we'll add it to the list, no, we'll not add it to the list. We vote, okay, can we start again, 'cause some people might have been confused? Okay, let's try to, so yes, we'll add it to the list, no, we'll not add it to the list. All those in favor? All those opposed? And, uh, that one does not get added to the list, and now we'll deal with the balance And that's carried unanimously. Okay, great, thank you very much, uh, everybody. Thank you, Michelle and, and the team for all of, uh, your work on this and Heritage Kitchener's work. Thank you to all the delegations for, um, coming in, uh, this evening, and, uh, as we know, one will be coming back, uh, by the end of September, and the remainder will be dealt with by staff and brought back at the appropriate time, uh, as, uh, as they deal with them. We'll now move on, um, to the issue of the sidewalk infill policy. We have three delegations, uh, for that item. Uh, I think the first delegation stepped out to, for a bio break, so I'll move into our second delegation on that issue, and, uh, that would be, um, James Howe, but before I go there, does staff, um, did staff wanna update the report at all, Mr. May? Or Mr. T, sorry? Oh, okay. Uh, Barry and, uh, I mean, Mr. Cronkite and Mr. Redman, did you guys wanna go over your revised report at all? Sure, if you can click in, please. Councilor Marsh?
Yeah, just, uh, on our agenda, we have delegations listed, I just wanna understand, uh, so we have the Director of Supply Services on before we look at the reports of the committees, and, um, uh, we have a, a gallery full of people waiting for the attending.
The, the Director of Supply Services is always the last person that we deal with.
Right, okay.
Uh, so we, we'll, the, um, we have three people who are registered as delegations for the sidewalk infill policy, who registered after the, uh, report, uh, was dealt with, and we have one person who's registered as a delegation to deal with, uh, the tenders.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll deal with the tenders af, right after the sidewalk infill policy. So with that, Mr. Redman?
Thank you, Mayor Verbenovic. As a follow-up from Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee on Monday, May twenty-fifth, staff were directed to provide additional information on recommendations brought forward by committee members at that meeting. Staff have reviewed the feedback, made changes to the policy, and recommend approving the revised policy as attached to report INS fifteen dash zero five one. The revised policy includes a number of changes which are highlighted on the policy. Specifically, these changes relate to the following. Staff have increased points allocated for proximity to, to community program facilities, parks, and type one and type two trails. The recommended increase is from five points to ten points for each of these categories. Since this change affects approximately seventy-five percent of locations, staff recommend increasing the minimum point threshold for priority one locations from fifty-seven to sixty-two points. Overall, this change... one locations from fifty-seven to sixty-two points. Overall, this change moves approximately thirty kilometers of sidewalk infill locations from priority three to priority two ranking. Staff have included wording in the policy that would pre-approve infill locations that score ninety points, ninety or more points. These locations would be pre-approved and would not seek any additional council approval. This change would affect approximately ten kilometers of sidewalk infill locations. Rather than merging priorities two and three and reallocating points, staff have strengthened the wording to more clearly outline the difference between priority one, priority two, and priority three locations. Staff have also added an exemption for cul-de-sacs or crescents that only serve the local residential population and do not provide direct access to another roadway, community park, trail, or public walkway connection. This exemption would deem such streets as priority three. As outlined within the report, staff do not recommend adopting the motions related to waiting until trees conclude their life cycle or planting new trees further back from the proposed sidewalk location. These motions, if adopted, would create a number of challenges for the sidewalk infill process. Lastly, this report contains an additional recommendation to commence the sidewalk infill process on York Street immediately, with installation to occur as soon as practical. Staff are available to answer any questions council may have tonight.
Okay, so we'll deal with any questions of staff, and then we'll move on to the delegations. Counselor Galloway-Sila, question of staff?
No, I just wanted to point out that I put in front, or I had the page pass around, the motion that went forward at GRAC, and I think David might be speaking as a delegation?
Mr. Coon is one of the delegations, that is correct.
I just wanted to put that out there, that I put that recommendation, so everyone has that, and that I have a motion at the appropriate time.
Okay. Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. I, it's more of a question, more of a comment than a question, in that I was pleased to see the increase in the points between the different thresholds and priorities. I think that was definitely something that I had talked about, and I think you really heard some of the things that the public said. The, trying to formulate the question, the addition of the program, community programs and facility or park and type one or type two trail, so you've changed those to be ten-point values?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct, from five to ten points.
Okay, and so then you reduced the other ones to five, so that you kept your twenty-five, is that my understanding?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. All of the points were originally five points, and that was to reflect that they all equally tend to generate pedestrian activities around them. So based on council's comments, we've increased those two thresholds.
Okay, all right. I just, I just thought that you may have adjusted some of the other ones, so that you kept that twenty-five point value, and you reduced something else, but, no, that's fine. Okay, I'll save my comments for later.
Counselor Galloway-Sila?
Just on that point, I think it's important to note that that section doesn't get weighted any higher, because it's still only out of twenty-five points, but it's those two things that can garner more points in that section.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Justin. The decision on York, did that follow the delegation that appeared before us last week?
Through you, Mr. Chair, or through you, Mr. Mayor, that did follow that commentary. We would like to start with high priority projects, that is one of the top priority project locations, and we're just hoping to start that sooner than later, based on the concerns that were raised at committee last week.
Okay. Are there mature trees on York?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have to look at that in more detail when we start working through the process. I believe there is a evergreen, I'm not sure what age that evergreen is along the proposed alignment for the sidewalk.
Okay. And can you give me a couple of, let's say, your other, is that one of your top three priority areas? And if so, what are the, do you want me to wait? What are the other two priority areas?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there are a few at the top of the list. Jubilee Drive is one that's quite high on the list, as well as Mill Street.
Okay, and what, can you tell me just briefly, because I know it's a big subject, but what can we do to improve the odds of saving mature trees when we install sidewalks?
Through you, Mr. Chair, or Mr. Mayor, whenever we're working in an area of a large mature tree, there's always a potential risk to damage to the tree. There are methods that we can try to mitigate that risk as much as possible, including designing the sidewalk as far away from the drip line as possible, using different techniques when installing the sidewalk, using different materials to install the sidewalk, looking at different designs of the roadway to minimize impact around the tree root structure.
Okay, and final question. Do you think that any sidewalks will be approved in older areas of Kitchener if we wait until mature trees die?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe that would delay a lot of sidewalk projects that would be approved at council but would likely not get installed if we have, if we adopt a policy recommendation such as the one recommended last week.
Thank you.
Counselor Gazola?
I just want to clarify, the recommendation that you're bringing forward tonight is the one that shows, the pages aren't numbered in your report, or I can't see the numbers, but you look at priority one, there are seventy-three kilometers, priority two, there are a hundred and forty-one kilometers. That's what you're bringing forward tonight?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct, that's attached policy.
And do I assume right by saying that the total still is four hundred and two kilometers? So therefore, there's about a hundred and eighty-seven kilometers in priority three?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we noticed on the pivot table that there is approximately fifty kilometers of sidewalk locations that were located in new subdivisions that hadn't yet had their sidewalks installed, but would have them installed as part of the development process. So we've now excluded those from the project because those will be going in at the cost of the developer. So that takes the number of kilometers from about four hundred down to about three hundred and fifty.
Okay, so that'll bring the priority three down to about a hundred and thirty-six kilometers, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the numbers that are on that pie chart are the kilometer length of sidewalks, with that fifty kilometers taken out.
Is there a number on that black blob?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there is, so priority three, which is less than thirty-six points, has about a hundred and thirty-two point nine kilometers of sidewalks that are missing, and that covers thirty-eight percent of the network.
One thirty-two, the, the black came through, but it was hidden by all the other black. The, and just, just another part, I want to clearly understand, there's a, you show a chart or graph, and you don't put any explanation on it. I just want to make sure that I, that I understand that. Are you saying that, if I'm not, that anything over ninety points now will go forward automatically without, without any deliberation, is that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that was suggested that we look at establishing a minimum threshold, so that would be a threshold that staff would support should council choose to go forward with that option.
Okay, but it's not on the table yet. And, and then, and if we do that, we're only looking at nine and a half kilometers.
Through, through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct.
Yeah. Now, the other figure I saw pulled out here, that you only have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year for this infill, not counting what's in reconstruction projects, right? Is that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct, based on current budget allocation.
Okay, so at this point, we're talking, and I figured it, right, a kilometer is a hundred and ten, a hundred and ten thousand, you've got enough to do a kilometer and a half.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the calculation for a cost of a kilometer of sidewalk is correct. We do have some money sitting in the budget, because this, the infill program has been deferred for a few years and has accumulated some budget.
So you have more than a hundred and sixty-five that we're aware of?
And through you, Mr. Mayor, initially, yes, we do, and then every year after would be about that amount.
Would you tell us how much you have?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we'd have to get back to you on the number for that. It is within the engineering budget, I don't have that budget in front of me.
Okay, my final question is, and I'm disappointed that I don't, I asked last week, you've done all this work, you've looked at every area in the city, so you know, you know the points for every area in the city, and you know where they fit into category one, two, or three. And I was hoping that we would receive that listing that we could look at. For example, I would, if, I would like to look at Vista Crescent and just see how many points are we talking. What happened to that list?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we do not have formal direction to bring back that list. We have part of the list with us here, but Vista Crescent specifically is at sixty-five points right now, or sixty-one points right now.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part, why, why didn't we get the list?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we wanted, we wanted the discussion to focus around the overall policy and not get into details of specific projects. So we're hoping to get council authorization to move forward with the policy, and we have the point thresholds for the different projects that have been talked about over the last few meetings, that we can talk about if those questions do come up. And we do have our top list of the streets that are ninety points or above with us.
But you have.
Counselor, Counselor Gazola, your time's up, if you want to.
Well, I would have liked to have seen, you, you, you have your list, but you won't share them with, with council. I, I don't understand that.
Okay, if you want to ask further questions, please buzz in. Counselor David, you had a point of clarification?
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on the point that we're taught, I think staff needs to speak to the difference between the account that hasn't been used for infill sidewalk versus the length of sidewalk that gets done via road reconstruction. If staff could just speak to that. Or if you don't know exact lengths, just, I want to, I want to be clear that we don't only do the infill portion.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, could I get, to repeat the question, I didn't catch the first part of it?
Sure, I just want to make sure there's no, there's clarity in the difference between when we redo a road, we, the sidewalks up till now have automatically been done on both sides, versus the budgetary amount that we have set aside for adding sidewalks to roads that aren't being reconstructed. So can you please clarify the difference between those two?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, any road that goes through a reconstruction project, the sidewalks are picked up through that budget. And this process would clarify whether they should be placed on both sides or only on one side through, through that process. On infill projects that stand alone, that's that separate budget that we're talking about. And this process would also apply to that, to determine whether they should be on both sides or one side.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Marsh?
Thank you. So, do you have other examples from other municipalities where they use a similar point system?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We don't have those examples in front of us directly tonight, but there are other municipalities that have went through a similar process. I believe that Berry Ontario just approved a similar policy in January of two thousand and fifteen. One of the first examples of a policy like this was for the city of Peterborough back in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, I believe. So those are two fairly local examples that, that we could look into for you.
Well, I'm just curious, because, you know, it has been noted by a few residents who've given feedback regarding the point system, that this is quite a departure, you know, from, from where we've been so far, and I think a lot of people do appreciate, as do I, the additional clarity in, you know, and, and it's helpful to make decisions, and so thank you for your work on that. But I do, I am quite hesitant to go ahead and approve this policy tonight without further community engagement around this, this decision. And I would also agree with Counselor Gazola that, as much as it's true, we don't want to focus, when we decide on this policy tonight, we don't want to focus on specific examples and have that cloud our judgment about a blanket policy. However, you do, you must have all of the sidewalk infill streets numbered out, because otherwise you wouldn't have been able to come up with this nifty pie chart. So it would be helpful to have a very broad understanding of all the different streets that are given the different points. So, yeah, I, I, I'm just, I would just echo the, the question, why, why wouldn't we just be able to see a good exam, a long list of streets?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, if we were to print, print out the list, it would be about a hundred pages long. So it's set up in a pivot table. When we look for a specific street, we actually have to, like, search for it in the list, because they're based on a segment of missing sidewalks. So one street could have four or five reoccurrences in a list, because there's areas where the sidewalk is discontinuous.
All right. Then I have a separate question just about trees. You know, we heard a counselor earlier tonight ask, wouldn't we have hardly any new sidewalks in older neighborhoods if we avoided destroying mature trees? And I, I take exception to that, because I think that, considering the fact that we have so many years ahead of us before the number, before we complete our sidewalk infill, I think that it would be a fair and balanced approach to, to look at ways to avoid as much as possible the destruction of mature trees. And, and I'd like to ask you, I mean, when you've done reconstruction projects in the past where you thought trees, destruction of mature trees could be avoided, have you not seen several examples where trees ended up having, getting damaged and dying?
Go ahead, please. Go ahead, Mr. Allen. Oh.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As was pointed out by Mr. Redman, when we do reconstructions near trees, put sidewalk infill near trees, there is a risk that trees will be damaged, be damaged and die. I do not have statistics on how many projects and how many trees were affected. They are case by case, and we do our best to mitigate that. We don't go back and check on the health of the tree five years after reconstruction to see if the tree declined. So we just don't have any statistics on it, I'm afraid.
Sure, I, I can appreciate that. But I, I have heard from staff and from residents anecdotally that it's quite often the case that post-construction, reconstruction of a road, the root systems are so damaged that even if the tree still stands that year after, that within five to ten years later, the, the trees often die. Have you not heard that anecdotally?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as I said, I don't have any specific memories of those, but.
All right, I'm not going to try to corner you into.
What I, what I would add is that generally, when we go in through the design of these projects, we won't put a sidewalk in where we know there's a high risk of the tree being damaged to the point where it will not survive. So if the sidewalk goes in, it's usually going to be in a location that we think there's a good chance of survival.
Right, but without your statistical evidence that you're lacking tonight, it would be hard for you to really accurately decide how high the risk is, would it not?
Through, you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm sure I'm out of time, thank you.
Counselor Gazola?
Are you around the second round already?
You're the only person in the queue.
I just want to make sure I understand one other, one final thing. In category three, do I understand correctly, regardless of everything else, there'll always, you're always going to put in at least sidewalks on one side of the, of the, of the street? Is that, am I reading that right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Staff will always recommend a sidewalk on at least one side of the street. It's up to council to decide whether or not they want to go against the policy in those situations and only put us, and put no sidewalks in on those streets.
I'm, I'm trying to understand, you say, what, what does policy, if, if we approve policy three tonight, we, we approve this, and therefore, doesn't that, can we, every time something comes up, challenge the priority three? I don't understand. I, I don't understand. If, if, if a street comes up, pops up as a priority three, no matter what anybody says, no matter what anybody does, there's going to be a sidewalk on at least one side of the, of the street? Is that, that's the way I read the, the, the legislation here that you're passing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. Our current, our current policy direction is sidewalks on both sides of every street, that's the long-term goal of staff, but recognizing it should be an incremental approach to get sidewalks in, into neighborhoods. We would recommend one side only if there's significant pushback from citizens.
So if we approve that tonight, that's, that's, that's it?
Okay, Counselor Davey.
Sorry, I keep chomping in, but I asked this question last week, and I think Counselor Gazola's question was, if it comes through priority three, I think you said no matter what anyone says, a sidewalk's going in one side of the street. But last week, my understanding was, it's still going to come to council to decide whether or not it goes in.
Everything comes to council one year ahead. Okay, Mr. Redman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the pol, staff's recommendation will be a sidewalk on one side, it's up to council to decide whether or not to approve that, or to go against the policy direction that we have before you.
Right, but that'll come forward one year ahead, is the point.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. The only area that would not is the pre-approved, if, if council decides to pre-approve those ten kilometers of projects, those ones would not come back before council.
Okay, Counselor Gazola.
Okay, so, so if we go ahead with the policy as it is written now, and there's sidewalks for one side of the street, and the people come and say we don't want that, council can change it, can change it?
Yep, council can do that. I guess council will have to decide that they feel that's, that's appropriate or wise, but--
I'm starting to wonder what we're doing here.
Sorry?
I'm starting to wonder what we're doing here.
Well, I think the whole point is, we're trying to move away from an environment where decisions are being politicized, to an environment where they're being made on principles, and hopefully council will stay true to their principles. That'll be up to council to decide.
Oh, and the principle can be changed by council.
Absolutely can. Counselor Marsh, and then we're going to go on to the delegations.
Let's move, that's fine, I just want to--
Question.
Is the intent of page two to three, priority three, less, now, just to follow up on Counselor Gazola and Counselor Davey's points, I mean, the, is it, is it not the intent of this priority three to allow for an exemption to be authorized, but then sidewalks will be required on one side only? Is that not the intent? I know the council could override that, but that's, isn't it the intent that one side would still be required according to the policy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that is the intent of the policy. Council can always make a decision to overrule a policy.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we'll now move on to delegations, and as I indicated, there are three delegations on this issue, and the first one is Mr. Terry Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have a bunch of things written up, but all the answers that came out tonight, the questions from last week, has created more, more concerns. Mr. Allen stated he wants to save the trees. There are a number of trees in, in all the areas of Kitchener-Warlow, I refer to Waterloo as well, because they are our sister city, that are going to have grave loss. These trees provide oxygen, shade in the summertime, so that our homes are cooler, they provide a windbreak in the wintertime, so our homes are warmer. There's the arborist reports that I come to question, too, and one is in regards to the street that I'm on, because it's determined, the arborist said the trees will not mature, and they're of no significant value. But I've done some research, and I got reports from Ohio State that says these things will grow two to three feet in diameter and thirty, and thirty to fifty feet tall in sixty to eighty years. This is significant. We're not going to be able to achieve this by cutting them down in our lifetime that we're there, and we are the people that are living in these neighborhoods now. Also, I was at the parts meeting on Tuesday, and on Tuesday, one of the planners told me that the direction is to clearcut areas and start over, not actually save anything that's around there, and that sort of disturbed me, and that seems like this is the way that staff is promoting it. The easiest way to get things done is to rip it all out and put in new. Somebody the other week commented on the carbon footprint, and that was related to the Mayfair again, that it takes so much longer and so much more energy to put new things in than to use the existing styles. There is a tree that comes to mind that has been damaged. Kent Avenue was redone the other year, an extra sidewalk put on one side. There's a very large maple tree that was on a corner that I could not put my arms around, that died. It was taken down earlier this month, May, I mean, not June. So it does show that there is post-stress after the work's done, no matter how much care is put into it by using the new methods of water and vacuum. I also remember the mayor asking if there was any way to get stats, and that it was going to be too expensive for pedestrians on these existing roadways, because that's what we're doing. When we want traffic calming in neighborhoods, we have statistics to show and back up that we need to shrink the road size, create speed bumps, make them one-way streets. We haven't done that in this case. It's all based on assumptions and forecasts that this is going to happen. And one of the forecasts in parts were that the existing people per hectare is roughly ninety-two, and the goal was over three hundred. So this is a long-term forecast, which is going to have effects on people that are here right now. There's so many things that I find contrary into the, into the report, and I, I think it was Counselor Marsh that brought it up. There's a very lovely pie chart, mine is in color, because I printed it at home. But where can the person that lives on one of these streets find this information? This would be great for real estate sales as well, and to learn the value of your home or what's going to happen. What is my ranking? Where do I stand in the city? Personally, I love where I live. One of my neighbors was here, she had to leave. When I gave her a copy of the report this morning, she actually went out, not only in our neighborhood, but also she focused on Simeon and Samuel, because they're in the report, and she did the driving to determine the meters and the kilometers that's in the report for all the criteria. And she found that lots of this really doesn't make sense, that how can you determine this when we cannot physically see the evidence? It may be one hundred pages, but I'm willing to look at it myself. I may work forty hours a week at my own job, but I'm doing this because this is important, not just to me, but to everybody that values their properties. And yes, the property's in question, our city property, but since nineteen-ten in my neighborhood, we have been taking care of these properties. We take care of the grass cutting, we have all the foliage, we have the lovely trees, we've done whatever is needed to make our area look nice, and we're proud of it.
Mr. Ross, your time is up.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Ross? No? Okay, thank you very much, sir, for coming in. Mr. James Howe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Thanks for this opportunity to address you tonight about the city's proposed policy on what I prefer to call adding missing sidewalks. Sidewalks are a critical piece of infrastructure. They affect the city's walkability. Anyone who walks frequently to get around notices missing sidewalks. Even more importantly, sidewalks are a basic necessity for people with physical mobility challenges to get around by themselves. Walking is our most natural form of transportation. Up until about a hundred years ago, walking was basically the only way you could get around. That has changed to detriment of our health, the health of our environment, and the strength of our connections to other people in our neighborhoods. So yes, we need to encourage more walking, which means more sidewalks, and we need them on both sides of the road. Imagine, if you will, if we treated other critical pieces of infrastructure as we do sidewalks, roads, for example. Now, let's not get too radical by imagining that roads are optional, we won't go that far. But if we gave property to owners the option of deciding if the road in front of their house was, was paved, that, you know, is, is something we could imagine, that, because it's not so far-fetched. I might be interested. A dirt road would surely reduce traffic in front of my house and slow down any vehicles that use it. Sounds like a good thing to me. Now, occasionally, one side of the road going one direction might be paved, and the other side going the other direction wouldn't be. But that shouldn't be a big inconvenience, even if you don't want to go on the dirt road, because with a car, it only adds seconds to your trip to go around the block and staying on paved roads. Can you imagine making any decisions on any other basic infrastructure that way? No. In general, what we do is we consider the greater public good. We should do the same with sidewalks, so why are sidewalks considered optional? Yet, at the same time, I do know that not everyone feels the same way as I do. So one of the things I really like about the proposed policy is that it has a scoring system that prioritizes where adding missing sidewalks should go, and puts them into three categories. That system should strengthen the city's case where sidewalks are most needed, while leaving open the opportunity to say no to sidewalks where the case for them is weakest. I also like that it opens a dialogue between residents who live beside or might use a sidewalk, and the city about how to add sidewalks while doing everything possible to address concerns. We can improve the policy to strengthen the case for sidewalks, but first, let's talk trees. Let's agree that, in general, in most cases, trees trump sidewalks. In most cases, preserving healthy, mature trees should trump adding a missing sidewalk. In level two, I'd suggest that two or more trees could take precedence over a new sidewalk, if the sidewalk around, if the sidewalk cannot avoid them, and if they have a diameter measurement of thirty centimeters or more, when measured at one-point-four meters above the ground, as is done in Toronto. In level three, one tree of that size could delay a sidewalk for the lifetime of that tree. In addition to enhancing the protection for trees, that survives the point system, so it places greater value on walkability, so destinations we want more people to walk to, such as being within four hundred meters of a commercial zone, a community programs facility or park, a healthcare facility, a place of worship, or a type-one or-two trail deserve to be awarded twenty points, because they are just as important as being within four hundred meters of a mixed-use corridor, which also gets twenty points. Same reasoning and points also apply to the other final, other factor, which is to complete a link along a roadway. And finally, all roads with residential buildings should be given five points, not zero points as is currently proposed, no matter how much traffic they have. Sidewalks are for people, cars.
Thank you very much, Mr. Howe. Any questions for Mr. Howe? Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks, James. You make some very valid points about, about sidewalks, and especially in areas of frequent use. How do you feel about sidewalks on cul-de-sacs and crescents, where really essentially the, the users are the people who live there? Do you feel that there has to be a sidewalk on those streets?
I think that is probably the best-case scenario, however, they would be judged on the point criteria, just like any other street, and they, every, as with every other street, it would involve citizen dialogue and decision between staff and council as to whether to proceed.
Okay, so essentially, then, my understanding is that you support the, the policy as written by our staff with the changes?
Well, I, I personally wouldn't recommend that automatically categorizing them as, as tier-three, but, you know, I'm not going to get too, you know, I'm not going to be worried about it.
Okay, thank you.
Those are all the questions, thank you, Mr. Howe. And our next delegation is Mr. David Kuhn. If I can ask staff to lower the--
Should I go here?
Uh, no, they'll, they'll lower it down for you.
Down, down, there we go.
Welcome, David.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name is David Kuhn, and I am a co-chair with the Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee, and that's why I'm speaking here tonight. It is also known as GRAC, so if I use that acronym, you'll know what I'm talking about. I'm here tonight to reinforce that GRAC, as a committee, supports sidewalks on both sides of streets. So furthermore, it is GRAC's recommendation that when the opportunity to include sidewalks in construction and infill projects exists, that sidewalks should, excuse me, be included on both sides of the street, except under extreme circumstances. This is about access for all, as well as safety. Sidewalks are key for a truly accessible and walkable city for everyone, and James reinforced a lot of the points that I would make about the necessity for sidewalks. It is important that policies are in place so that accessibility for all is ensured. It is not only about the benefit to people with mobility issues and disabilities, but also helping to ensure that travel by anything other than a car is safer for everyone in our community. It is GRAC's hope that council will consider this when making any decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, David. There are some questions. Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, David, for coming in and speaking so eloquently. I want to ask you, what are you, what are your thoughts about the fact that the sidewalk infill policy, at the current budget levels, it would, would not allow for complete sidewalks on both sides of the streets for close to a hundred years in total? Is that, I think that's right?
I would say that it is not my position, nor GRAC's position, to make comments on budgetary issues, that would be for council, obviously, to deal with, but I would say the sooner, the sooner the better for, for upgrades and new, new projects would be ideal for, in our opinion.
Yeah, okay, that's fair. Considering the fact that it would take so many decades before we would have sidewalks on both sides, do you, what's your opinion about the idea of delaying sidewalk on both sides of the street, in the case where there's sidewalk on one side, but mature, several mature trees that would be affected on the side that there's no sidewalk?
With respect to council and trees, I would say that, again, as I've outlined previously, that GRAC's position is that, where possible, anywhere possible, we support sidewalks on both sides of the street.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, I just have one, David, you talk about under extreme circumstances, and I just want to understand what GRAC is sort of thinking around that.
Yeah, I think, I think that was saying that, because we're not experts, so we don't see what staff sees, and we don't see what you see all the time, so obviously, there may be certain issues and circumstances that arise where sidewalk on both sides-- on both sides of the street is not feasible. For whatever reason, that would be up to council and staff to determine.
Just maybe one other question, because you can obviously speak firsthand as someone with a mobility challenge. In circumstances, maybe you can just talk a little bit from a personal perspective, in circumstances where there isn't a sidewalk, you know, or there isn't a sidewalk at least on one side, what does that mean for someone with a mobility challenge? How, what kind of challenges does that present?
Yeah, I'll use myself as an example, and I've got a few examples of these, but there are many times where I will be on a bus trying to go somewhere, be it, you know, be it a public event or just in general, trying to get from Point A to Point B, and so I will spend time on city bus, GRT bus, and if it takes me 20 minutes of sitting on a bus to get, say, from my house or Fairview Mall to somewhere, that's, that's quite a bit of time to wait. So if I'm in a position where I've been on the bus for 20 minutes and then I get somewhere and I get off the bus and say there's sidewalk on where I'm getting off, but then, you know, 10, 20 feet ahead, it cuts away and there's nothing else, or on the other side of the street, there's nothing else, then where do I go? Or there are also times where a bus stop will be somewhere where there is no sidewalk. So again, I can't really get off the bus and, yeah, I have nowhere to go because, because there's no, there's no curb cuts, there's no anything, there's just, just grass and roadway. So I think, and I've experienced that too recently, I had an experience where, again, waiting on the bus and then getting off, I had to wait about 15, 20 minutes for another bus to, to take me out, further out of my way because I wouldn't have been able to get, get home or wherever I was coming from. So, yeah, that's my, I guess that would be my personal experience on that.
Great, thank you so much for sharing that with, with council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions.
Thank you.
There are, Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yes, Counsel? Is there a sidewalk issue? Is nobody...
I have one other delegation registered with respect to the Kennedy Palmer reconstruction, and judging, judging by the white outfits, I presume that's a large number of the people in the audience here that are Simeon sidewalk, and that we'll be dealing with shortly as well. But we're dealing with the policy first.
Oh, I understand that, so they're on a separate tender, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, just clarification.
Okay. I will ask, just out of courtesy, is there anybody else that wants to speak to the policy that hasn't registered? No? Okay, if not, then Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I'm prepared to bring forward the motion that is provided for us in the staff report with the staff recommendations, with the changes in policy that have occurred over the last week. If I can, I'll briefly speak to it. I just, first of all, wanted to thank staff and committee for allowing this further dialogue to happen because I do really think that we have a policy in front of us that is stronger than it was last week, that brings together all of our strategic plan, our, our transportation demand management, our transportation plan, and all of the policies that we have in place to really drive home being pedestrian-friendly community. It looks towards improving our environment. I understand trees are still a contentious issue and they probably always will be, but I, I do feel as though we need to continue to move forward with the policy as written. By chance, we were able to, or we had scheduled a Grand River Accessibility Advisory Committee meeting, so I was able to attend as the council rep, and they were able to briefly discuss it and bring forward that motion, and I thank David for coming out tonight and speaking on behalf of the committee. And I really do think it's important, you know, we put a lot of weight into a number of our advisory committees, and we need to, we need to listen from, from, to this advisory committee as this does affect them quite significantly. But again, they do realize too that there are going to be exemptions to the rule or exceptions to the rule, and I think that that's important to note in this new policy is, is kind of that it's on page three of five of the new policy G, where it really talks about cul-de-sacs and crescents with less than 50 residential units that are going to be kind of looked at differently outside of that weighting, and I think that that's something that's important. But I support this because it puts more weight towards Priority One, there's more in Priority Two, there's less in Priority Three than there was last week. There's justification for it, and I feel like we need to continue to move forward in putting sidewalks and working towards being a lot more pedestrian-friendly for all of our users. So I, I hope that we can get support for this moving forward tonight because I really do think that this new policy in discussions with staff, because I know I initially had said, "Let's collapse them," but there's much more clarity for me feeling comfortable between the difference between two and the priority two and priority three than that was there, that was, sorry, that wasn't there last week, and that's why I think moving forward with the, the three priorities is, is the right way to, way to go, and that I appreciate all the work that's been done, done on this policy to date, and I think we really do have a, have a strong policy moving forward.
Counselor Davy.
Thank you. I'll support the motion. I'd also add the amendment that's in the report regarding pre-approved sidewalk infill. The threshold staff's outlined is 90 points. I would prefer lower, but in the interest of getting this passed, I will, I will move that 90 points to be the threshold. And can I speak to the policy as well then?
Yep.
Okay, is that, sorry, clarification then, is that actually in the policy or not at this time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have included it in the policy, but it is highlighted. It's located in two areas, so if council chooses to remove that, we would have to strike that out of the policy.
It's included in...
It is included at this point in time.
Okay. I'll speak to the policy then briefly. I, I'm going to support it, but I won't lie, I have major concerns here. What we've, going back to how it was done, we dealt with streets at budget time that no one really scrutinized, and sidewalks were put in place, blanket policy, done. Sometimes residents, well, oftentimes residents were caught by surprise, and that wasn't fair, but that, that was how it was done. In an effort to de-politicize the tender process, which we have, the tender process is now going to be de-politicized as a result of this, but we have just, as a result of this policy, we have politicized the heck out of every single future sidewalk policy. I guarantee we're going to have, in the, in the very near future, we're going to have Priority Twos and probably even some Priority Ones where members of council will vote against it, vote against sidewalk going in, and which is, it's the very basic form. It is literally a support, the people that you represent versus the facts of the situation, which puts politicians in an incredibly awkward situation. So I'm going to support it, as Counselor Etherington said last week, hoping that members of council have the wherewithal to respect the facts when we look at them, saying this is a Priority One or this is a Priority Two, we have to, we have to respect the walkability of the city, because otherwise it will be an assault on walkability. And when I hear delegate, when I hear the delegation from GRAC, like I really implore people to consider if they, if they're going to try and have no sidewalks at all, even on either side, what you're saying to people with disabilities is that your street is close to them.
Counselor Fernandez.
I've been listening to what's discussion, but one of the things I, I didn't get a chance to ask, and I apologize for asking a question at this time, but one of the successes that I've seen is what we did on Huron Road, which is a multi-use pathway. It means that it's, it's a little bit wider, but pedestrians, cyclists, people with mobility issues, strollers, everybody can use that. Have we looked at the ability to take that similar idea, especially on, in areas, say, for example, like Homer Watson Boulevard, where even if we do put bike lanes in, the likelihood of people using them on Homer Watson is probably pretty slim, where we would transfer those, those sidewalks and make them dual-purpose? That would make them much more usable and much more frequented by a variety of residents within the city. Have we thought about that through this whole process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Multi-use trails would function like a sidewalk in certain cases. They would have to be looked at a detailed design in those situations, but they would suffice for a sidewalk in certain locations. It wouldn't be ideal for most locations, but in some locations, that would work in lieu of a sidewalk.
Yeah, I agree, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is that maybe we, so that we get more general users on some of those very, very busy roads, and Block Line is another example where we have a multi-use pathway as well. Is there an ability for us in this policy to maybe add a definition where in the absence of a bike lane or in the absence of, you know, a better use of a sidewalk that's not getting used because it's such a busy road, that we will allow multiple uses? Am I throwing a wrench in the whole process here? I apologize, I should have asked this earlier.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, you're not throwing a wrench in the process. I think when we were consulting with the community in those locations, that would be something we would bring back to council on a case-by-case basis, so I think that this policy doesn't preclude us from not being able to do that.
Okay.
And that would work its way through the consultation engagement process.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So you know what? I think we've come a fair bit further down the road, no pun intended, on where the, where we were last week, and I do appreciate staff's work. I was really pleased when I saw the highlighted portions, especially where we didn't collapse the priorities, I thought it was important to keep those priorities and that you were a bit clear on the priorities. I continue to be concerned, as Counselor Marsh is, about the implications on mature trees, and I know how there, that had significant effect on Old Mill Road when I was a new councillor and we lost a number of trees on there for a sidewalk. I'm hoping that although comments are about de-politicizing this because of the point system, we are challenged to listen to our constituents, to the people who elect us, and I think that's really very, very important as well. We have to balance that. You have, you have kept some of that opportunity within here. Just a quick note, with no disrespect to Counselor Davy, our Finance Chair, I have asked in previous budgets to look through those streets, but usually by the time we get to that point, we're in the 11th hour of budget deliberations, and we don't get a chance to scrutinize those streets as well as we should, we could, and I think it's just the nature of our budget process. Maybe that's something we should be doing well in advance. So I, I hope to, to support the policy as it has been written at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Marsh.
Thank you. I, I am torn, because on the one hand, I absolutely appreciate the work that's been done to clarify the sidewalk infill policy. I also highly value walkability and accessibility, and so I, I, I want to support this, this policy. At the same time, I would like to see us have increased community engagement on looking at how this will affect neighborhoods, and so what I would like to see is if we do support this policy tonight, that, that we revisit it by the, within two and a half years, so by the end of 2017, so that we could get some public engagement, public feedback, how's it working so far, how could we tweak it better, and get staff feedback on how's it working so far, how could we tweak it better, so that we aren't stuck with a policy that, you know, was, was put together and brought forward in somewhat quick, quick manner. So I would urge council that we can direct staff to come back with a, an update about how the policy is working within two and a half years.
Okay, so just to be clear, and Counselor Galloway-Seelock, I took your motion to refer specifically with respect to the final policy in York Street, but that that was in addition to what is on Number Four, Underplanning and Strategic Initiatives Committee, which is specifically the, the approval of the policy, so it would be 15-051 now as opposed to Report 15-035, but it would also include the CAO delegation, the review by 2019, and the York Street part that's in this report. Is that, that was your intent? Okay, that was what I understood. So the review would be 2019, as came out of committee last week? If you want something sooner, that would have to, that would require an amendment later on.
Yeah, I'd like, just like to add then a friendly amendment to have a review in 2017, if council can support that, if people would rather have a bit more time than 2018. I don't think, I think 2019 is too long.
I think what we heard from staff last week, and I'm not trying to debate with you, but was that we need to have three full years of experience in order to get a meaningful report, and that was why that was the recommendation at committee.
Right, but here we are, June 1st, 2015, so I think that three full years of experience after mid-2018, I think that we would be well within our reach to have a review by the end of 2018.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the new, the new process only starts next year, 2016, so it'd be 16, 17, 18, the report would come back in 19. Anyway, that's your amendment, I will accept it. To be clear, Counselor Galloway, is there a second for your motion? Galloway-Seelock, sorry, Counselor Ionitis, is there a second for Counselor Marsh's motion? Amendment, I'll, and I'll come back to the amendment. Counselor Fernandez, okay?
So to clarify, it's 2018 then? I, I forgot about the full three years of, 2018 is when I'd like to amend it to.
Okay, so then it'll only be two years. But that's fine, we'll take that amendment. Counselor Janetski.
Thank you very much. This has been very, a very contentious issue, and I've been involved with this for the last few years on it through different residents in my, in my ward. I'm not happy where we are at this point in time. We've, we've gone through this exercise over the last, basically a week or so, even though we had a PIC meeting back in April 1st after a public notice was sent to invite all the citizens of Kitchener to come out and comment on it. And all we has about 30 people that showed up, and I think a good chunk of them were from people who were concerned on their streets, whether it was Vista Crescent or Simeon or Samuel or wherever. And, and I think what we're going to have a problem in the future is that if this gets adopted tonight, that people, as the issues come about on their particular street, will come out in masses and complain on this. In looking at the information that has been presented, I know staff went back this week and revisited to, to some degree based on council's recommendations last week, and provided their different positions on it, and I can appreciate that. I'm not happy in terms of the, where we're going for on this. I question some of the categories that we have in the table with the various factors for point systems. Some of them are reasonable, and others, they are reasonable, but there's some things that don't make any sense for a particular area. And I've had the, the chance, not the chance, but I took the chance this, this past few days to sit down and do a little bit of exercise to do an evaluation. You know, Counselor Gazzola mentioned we didn't get any information. I know staff responded and said that, you know, it'll be 100 scenarios, and they just couldn't do it in this timeframe, but we really have to have some type of examples to, to look at this. So I looked at the Vista Crescent, I took a few other streets where, that have, do not have sidewalks. I took this report that, that we have that has all the maps and the sidewalks on them, whatever, and I, and I have a little ruler that fit to the scale, and I've measured out, trying to follow, follow the table, and took different cul-de-sacs or crescents throughout, just a few handfuls of the, of the city. of the city. And I figured out, and I didn't figure it out, but what I had determined was there was no example that would fit into Priority Three. All the calculations, and you measure to the school site, you measure to the hospital, you measure to the community's trailing system, you measure to a bus stop, whatever, and you add 20 points here and three points, five points there, and you add them up, and then you get 55, then you get 62, then you get 74. Everything's been over 50. I haven't seen anything that fits into Priority Three. I feel this whole thing has been skewed with the direction that the more added numbers you fit in there and items that you add, you fatten up the figures, that you can't fit anything into the lower figures. And that is unfortunate, the way this has come about. Now granted, there's a little thing that says there would be some exemptions, and that means coming back all the time. Even when you look at Priority Three, it says sidewalks on both sides unless you, it fits with certain exemptions, and same with Priority Two. It becomes unacceptable in my position. I think the input from some of the residents, and we've got some emails this past week that say, you know, resident inputs here, there should be some points calculations and other factors, public consultation not met, not even being considered, totally ignored. But I think the residents have some strong points here. This past week, it just happened to be coincidental that this is the way it's unfolded. We had the public meeting last week to deal with the sidewalks. My Vista residents had a public PIC last Wednesday to consider what's going to happen in their neighborhood, and then compare their situation to what's been accepted in the policy. And staff made a presentation, provided five alternatives, all the alternatives had sidewalks, and the residents were upset. Some of them started saying, well, you know, maybe we'll agree with one sidewalk on one side, but it was all reluctantly. In the end, it really didn't, most, the majority really didn't want any sidewalks at all. So as a result, they weren't happy with it. I got phone calls, emails over the weekend, they even stopped to knock on my door to talk about this. And phone calls, I spent hours and hours talking with a handful of people that are upset, they're crying, they can't believe what is happening. And they figured that once this policy gets adopted, they're screwed. Now granted, I talked to staff earlier today and said, well, we can provide an exemption because they fit into Priority Two. I don't think they're going to be happy on that. Now, there was a contingent of 20 of them out last Monday night to this, and how many are there here tonight? None of them. Oh, from Vista Crescent? Oh, there are a couple, sorry, I didn't realize that. Some of them didn't even get any information, they never saw this report that we're dealing with tonight, they have no idea in terms of the changes of the policy. I did talk to, you know, a handful of them and brought them up to date, and they thought like, what's the point in fighting, you know? It's just too challenging. So as a result, I'm just making notes here.
Yeah, Janetski, if I can ask you to start wrapping up, please?
Yep, I'm just about finished, I've got a month of checkpoints done here. So as a result, they're not happy. Again, one of the residents brought up the issue of salt last week and the impact of providing more sidewalks and the impact on the environment in Lakeside Park, and that could apply to the whole city, that was their concern as well. So in the end, in discussing this matters with them, I'm of the opinion, this whole exercise, even though it's made some progress to some degree, is still premature, and the full gamut of the public input from the whole city of the residents has not been fulfilled accordingly. So I am recommending that this whole matter be deferred and reconsidered again in the fall after another consultation process done, that the public can come out and hear what's happening with the sidewalks. Because unless it's happening, you're back here, that's when you appear. And I think what we've gone through right now has been not done very well. So I must-
Chairman, I'm asking for a deferral to the fall. Okay, that's fine, I will come back to you for a deferral. Counselor Gazola.
Yeah, I hope you'll humor me for a couple minutes. I just want to go through here and review what we're approving, what we're dealing with. So I have to go back first to the yellow sheets, and the first item is, we're approving the sidewalk infill policy, which comes up with three priority levels, and those were slightly changed by staff with today's version, this weekend's version. There were a couple of minor changes made for criteria, and the pointings were changed slightly.
That's right, so it's the report found in INS 15-051.
That's right, okay. So the question, I do have a question, is it my understanding now that all three of those priorities can be appealed to council? Are there exemptions allowed for all three of the priorities?
As long as they're under 90 points. 90 points would be automatic, is my understanding.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. And that's the other change, that we, has someone moved that?
That is part of, that is part of what's moved.
Okay, okay, and the other factor is the CIO's designation is there?
CIO's delegation is in.
Yes.
The review in 2019 is in, but there's been, but that's going to potentially be amended, and York Street is in.
Okay, that's what I wanted to come to, and then, and then the other change is York Street.
Right.
Okay. If I could just make a comment?
Yep, please do.
Okay, now, when I see what's here, I'm prepared to go along with all of those. I'm not prepared, I support what's happening on York Street, but I wish it weren't here tonight as part of this program. It's just come in all of a sudden. We don't know how many, I don't know how many points we're talking about. Is there any, there's no indication, I don't know how many dollars we're talking about. It may well be warranted, but shouldn't that be something that we deal with separately as opposed to throwing it all in tonight?
Mr. Redman, can you answer the question? I believe some of that information's in the report.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. York Street, a portion of York Street gets 100 points and another portion of it gets 95 points. The total distance is 1.25 kilometers in length, so-
And what would that be cost-wise approximately?
About $150,000 for the completion of that segment.
Okay.
So when you give us those points, well, okay, I'll go along with that point because I don't have, and you say it's only going to be 100 and?
Approximately $150,000 for 1.25 kilometers of sidewalk.
I'll spend that one over many, many times. I do want to, so I will support what's before us tonight, but I do want to emphasize that I would like to see the complete report. I think when we're dealing with these issues, we have a right to see a particular area and go and second-guess the information that's there. At least, we should have that right. We may not agree with it, but this way, we're just, we have no idea. There's some streets that I can't imagine would be up in those high point values. Like I asked Saint, for Simeon Street, what's the point value there?
Seven or seven five.
Mr. Taggy?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify on that last item. The recommendation that you have in front of you with respect to York Street is simply to initiate the process on York. And once we have the information with respect to public input and other aspects, council will get a full, will get a full report, including the cost and other aspects. And at that time, council may decide, whatever council chooses to decide at that time.
I don't disagree with that, but why, is that how things are going to get to us? You know, to me, it should have been brought in a separate, as a separate thing, but that's fine. I will support what's there based on the fact that I'm really not sure, because everything can be appealed.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just very simply, I think that, it's already been said, every city that values walkability needs a policy that supports sidewalks on both sides of our roads. While we should do everything possible to preserve mature trees and our tree canopy, we should not delay sidewalk implementation by as much as 30 to 50 years, waiting for those trees to die. In my opinion, if we adopt such an amendment, we might as well kiss goodbye to the sidewalk I think we should adopt the policy and put much more time, energy, and money into finding ways to better protect existing trees. I also agree, we need to get the politics out of this issue, where ward councillors seek to appease residents by opposing new sidewalks. I've been caught in that position, it's not pleasant. I also think, for the same reason, that we should watch carefully the date of any review, because I can guarantee, we won't have a pedestrian charter if that review, that future review, takes place in an election year. It'll be voted down. Because I want to see more sidewalks constructed, I will support the charter, but I will not support Counselor Marsh's dateline on that review amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I want to compliment staff on accepting the input and listening. I think we've got a great basis to make decisions on, but we also have the ability as council to listen to our citizens and be able to hear their views on their streetscape and the trees in their neighborhood. So I'm willing to accept this and support it.
Counselor Marsh.
I just want to make a few points of clarification. So first of all, when Counselor Janetski pointed out that he's concerned that this policy encourages more exemptions, I would disagree. I think that already we have seen the problems that come into play when residents decide to object to a sidewalk infill and come at the point of the tender being awarded. And that is happening tonight, and that is a difficult situation because the residents are waiting to see what's going to happen, and it's a difficult decision because staff need to be able to plan for what will happen and not just guess. So I think that one of the strengths of this policy is that it includes the forethought a year out. I also want to say that I don't see anything here in this, in this week's version of the policy about exploring more alternative designs and methods. I'd like, I liked seeing that in our description last week, and I would like to see more of that explored. I would like to also take up some of the, I would like this policy to be able to be tweaked, whether it's in an election year or not. I'd like to see us make sure that we aren't tying ourselves to a policy for three, four years before we can tweak it. And so can we not keep it in as an option to say, and staff can come forward with recommendations for tweaking on an ongoing basis, so that we don't have to necessarily have a full review? But I mean, for example, one of the suggestions that we received from a resident on Friday was to include in our ranking system the level of housing density. Now that is a smart idea, and just because we haven't had enough time to look at this policy and receive more feedback, that's not going in tonight. But wouldn't it be great if we could add smart ideas on an ongoing basis? So I agree, we don't want to politicize this, and we don't want to have a huge hullabaloo in an election year. But can, I would like, I propose then, I'm going to change my amendment to ask that we include a caveat that staff come forward with small improvements to the policy on an ongoing basis as required.
Okay, so your amendment belongs to the floor now. If you withdraw, I have to ask, is Counsel Fernandez willing to have it withdrawn as the second?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So you're now making a new amendment. Counsel Fernandez, are you still willing to second it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes?
If it is suggested, if staff will be ready to withdraw on a semi-annually basis, would we be able to also-
The-
Not to the idea of constantly having to be amended?
Okay, can you turn, can you turn, Counsel saying-
Oh, sorry, staff can't do it on their own, it has to be set in direction. I support a year, two-year review, but an amendment saying that it has to be constantly tweaked, it doesn't give staff proper direction. What timeline? Are they supposed to just come up with whenever, in their mind, they think a policy can be further improved and continue to bring reports back? It's confusing to them, as well as rest of council. I think a set timeline for review, it's helpful, it's necessary, but what you're suggesting around it right now, it's a rather bit confusing, I think, for council and staff.
Okay, well, I appreciate, I appreciate your feedback about that. I just think that with a brand-new policy that has not been adequately brought forward to the public in a full manner, that we need to have some flexibility and not have it set in stone for four years.
Okay, thank you. So we'll come back to that still, because we still have people commenting. Counselor Ionitis.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Verbanovic. I think we've heard quite a bit of range of comments around the horseshoe here, and I like what we see here in the recommendation. I think it's a balanced, balanced approach. Realistically, we didn't really have a policy, and we do now. And the policy we even had before really didn't have any public input until the last second. Now they have their input at least a year ahead. So I think we've been politicizing this to the extreme. I think this is a balanced report, you get a balance of all the options that are needed, and I think we should just move forward with this. And I'm not prepared to support the amendment to the timeline. I think 2019 is reasonable. It gives ample time to justify whether or not this is a viable process. I don't think to give it one or two years is not going to do us justice, because reality is, there's always someone that's not going to be happy with this. So if we do it in two years' time, there's, we're probably going to have some people that aren't happy, but overall, how many people do we have that are happy about this? So I think it's, I think we needed to give it some, a timeframe that's due, like, and I agree with Counsel Etherington, I think if this comes in 2018 or anything like that, I think it's just going to be another political animal, and this is what we're trying to do, is to stay away from that as much as possible and de-politicize this. So again, I'm supportive of the recommendation, and I want to see us move forward.
Counsel Singh.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is a good direction forward, and we didn't have much of a policy before. I think we managed with the strategy as best as we could in outlining areas that needed to be prioritized for connectivity and better walkability of our neighborhoods. This finally lays out a long-term strat plan as the direction that we're going to go, as well as keeping into realities of our fiscal constraints, and at the same time recognizing and including the process for public feedback and input as well. In having a point system, it allows for a well-constructed point of view and taking all considerations for the residents, as well as what's better for the neighborhood. So I will be supportive of the policy at hand. I don't disagree that policy, new policies need to have a reflective thought after they're initiated to see how they're going, but I think that's already built into the report and recommendation. Having it come too early won't allow the necessary time for us to really see how it's being carried on, especially when the policy is- being carried on, especially when the policy itself speaks to a year process in consultation with a neighborhood, and then a process to come back to council for further consideration as well. I think it's a good roadmap, but at the same time, as council members, it's within our capacity at any point to bring a topic forward and accelerate, even though if it's outlined for a four-year period in this report, or whatever the outline is, we can ourselves bring it forward as a discussion item, or direct staff to bring a report back earlier, requesting how that process is going. So, that's within our capacity. So, building that right now, or outlining a confusing guideline for constant tweaks, I can't support that, but I will be willing to support lesser, shorter timeline, but something that gives prudent time for this policy to be put into place, practiced, and see exactly how it's being managed, and how our neighbors, our residents, are being able to bring their concerns forward, and how those are being reflected into the policy as well.
Okay, looks like all the comments have been made, so I'll make my own. I believe the City of Kitchener has been at the forefront of the issue of walkability over the last number of years, whether it was through our pedestrian charter, or official plan, and other policy documents that guided our work with respect to sidewalks and walkability. I understand that this is an issue that is, at times, difficult, because we often hear from our residents, from a broad policy perspective, that they're supportive of walkability, supportive of more sidewalks, more trails, and so on. But often, when the issue becomes one that their particular street faces, it often becomes confrontational, and at times, difficult for council and neighborhoods to deal with this particular issue. Fundamentally, this boils down, boils down to me, to a principle of greater walkability for a community, a principle that requires more sidewalks, and that really allows us to build stronger neighborhoods, built on a complete streets philosophy. I think the work that staff have done has been an excellent piece of work, they've endeavored to engage the community in it, and it comes down to a set of principles and values that we, as a community, either have or we don't have. And I think the policy furthermore is endeavoring to take the politics out of the issue, and a number of members of council have spoken of that. For me personally, this comes down to principles around inclusion and human dignity. And when it comes down to those principles, I think, I personally believe, from a value point of view, these are things that I need to side with. This morning, we were at the, a number of us were at the opening of Victoria Park Playground. And after we did the opening of the playground, I had an opportunity to speak with a member of the committee who has accessibility challenges. And she's a person who developed those mobility challenges when she was, when her baby was only a few months old, as a result of a car accident. And I commented to her, you know, back when I was growing up, or your kids were growing up, the notion of an accessible playground wasn't even something that was talked about. And so, those kids would never have the opportunity to participate in a playground like they can now in Victoria Park. And she looked at me and she said, "That's true, but even worse than that is, as a mother, I could never accompany my child to that playground, because I couldn't get there." And that, for me, is, when I talk about human dignity and inclusion, that, for me, are the principles that we're trying to preserve here, and the ones that I believe I need to support. So, I will not support the deferral if it gets seconded. I cannot support the amendment. I believe the timing, as recommended by staff, is the prudent timing. They are the professionals, and, you know, more and more at times, I'm finding that, you know, folks are trying to second-guess the professionals, and it's important to question and challenge. But at some point or another, we have to either believe in the people we have on our staff, or quite frankly, question why they are on our staff. And I choose to believe that we have good people, people who are professional, dedicated to their roles, and I want to trust them in this particular issue. So, with that, I will now, Councillor Janetski, I said I would come to you for your deferral. So, you're deferring it until...
Until the fall.
Until the fall? Is there a seconder for the deferral?
You're on the floor.
Okay, Councillor Fernandez is seconding the deferral.
Recorded vote.
Recorded vote, that's fine. All those in favor of the deferral? All those opposed to the deferral? And that motion does not pass. I'll now go to the amendment, as moved by Councillor Marsh and seconded by Councillor Fernandez, and that's that staff bring back changes and updates as required in the future. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion does not carry. And now, the original motion, as moved by Councillor Galloway-Seelock.
I'd like to pull up the CAO portion to go down next.
Okay, that's fine, Councillor Gazola, I'll deal with that first then. All those in favor? All those opposed? That motion carries. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, I'm now going to move into the tenders, because we have one delegation for Kennedy Palmer, and I know there are a number of people in the audience for dealing with Samien Street. Before I begin that, we're clearly going to go after 11, so I need a motion that requires unanimous consent to go past 11, moved by Councillor Fernandez, seconded by Councillor Marsh. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. We will now then deal with the one-registered delegation, which is Mr. Terry Ross, with respect to the Kennedy Palmer reconstruction. And that's Item B1, Sub 3. Welcome, Mr. Ross, again.
Hey, thank you again. Well, my first reaction to the tender, I didn't see that it broke down any values for the extra sidewalks that have been proposed for this area. So, we cannot see how much extra this is going to cost in a budget. And I'm also curious why the tenders have such a wide price range. The lowest range is $700,000 less than the highest. And, you know, sometimes when things are, seem like a really good deal, they really are not. So, I'm just wondering, what is going to be lacking in accepting the lowest tender that's out there? See, these, our streets, according to the report, was built in 1910, and we haven't had any infrastructure issues yet, nothing of real significance. However, I notice around the area where we have been doing lots of infrastructure, and the latest example would be St. Mary's Hospital area. That area is only a couple years old, and it already had problems, as well as water main breaks in different areas all throughout the city. And all of these areas have less age than the streets that I live on. And the tree issue, I mentioned that earlier, it's been bothering me, and I do have the research, anybody that wants to see it. I printed off only one copy, I didn't get it to the clerk in time, so it wouldn't be able to be presented, but I have everything here if anybody wants to know about it. And that is my, you know, one of the topics is the Arbus Report. I haven't seen it, it's just word of mouth, that the trees are not going to mount anything, and they're going to be cut down, and they're going to be replaced with, I think it was called Aspen Elm. Not really sure what that is. I don't know if it has any seeds in it that will help the wildlife, that actually uses this right now. In the report as well, from Ohio State, it talks about the tree being rare. So, here we are, about to cut down five existing healthy trees, and there really aren't too many of them out there right now. So, we're taking away somebody's habitat, as well as possibly contributing to the extinction of the species. So, I'm not against the installation of sidewalks, but they have to be proven that they're needed. I am against the increased maintenance costs that's going to be involved with installing more. We can all probably identify all the orange paint we see all around our sidewalks, and that paint is on those areas for one, two, maybe even three years before any maintenance is done. So, all we're doing now is adding to our future costs of upkeep on these areas. And I'd like to point out that the sidewalks in my area, again, are from around the 1910 era, and they're standing up really well. But you can look at some of our new construction, Cortlandt Avenue, for example, the sidewalks aren't smooth, they're not level, and they're already flaking off, and that is less than two years old. So, again, it goes back to the value of the tender. Has, are we taking a risk by spending less money on this, just because it's less money? Or are we going to risk quality? So, your homework needs to be done on things like this. And I realize that decisions are made with the knowledge that we have at the time, but 24 hours later, a week later, a year, maybe even a decade, we have new knowledge and experiences that will cause us to reflect and make new decisions. So, it's okay to admit a mistake. I do that as often as I can, because it's no sense holding on to something because that's my pride and ego, preventing me from accepting the fact that I made an error. So, by admitting, it allows us to make the changes now. And remember, you are trusted servants of the people, not the staff. We are the elected people, and I would like to see more involvement by community. And seeing David here tonight and talking with him, I realized, there's actually two people with mobility issues on my street. And the one is on Palmer, and when you put in the sidewalk across their place, they're now going to lose the spot for the mobility van that they have there, because they have two vehicles. They will have elimination. This process is detrimental to them. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ross? Councillor Fernandez?
Thank you, Terry, for coming and talking about the tender process here. So, I want to just ask you very bluntly, what exactly are you hoping for from council? I know that in the report, it talks about that the infill side, the sidewalk infill is still unresolved, and that the tender price, I agree, we probably should have seen some kind of breakout of what the cost of the sidewalk was, when it was resolved, or if it was resolved, what the cost would have been. I think that that would have been a prudent way of going. So, what essentially are you asking for tonight?
Well, I'm really wondering, yes, about that price, and that's just because of the cost that I heard for York Street. I actually drove down there yesterday to see what it was like, because it was brought up last week. And I think there's about four blocks, and two of those blocks have sidewalks on both sides, the other two blocks have a sidewalk on one side. So, we're talking 300 feet of sidewalk for over $100,000? I don't understand the figures on where they come from. Now, what I would like to see, yes, infrastructure, 1910, it is getting there, it does have to be replaced, I agree. Why put it off any longer? This has gone from last year to now. And I was really confused as well, at the beginning budget, at the beginning of the year, because Kennedy Palmer was listed for 2017, it wasn't listed in 2015. What I would like to see is that the sidewalk decision is taken out, because we don't have all the facts yet, we don't have the pedestrian count, separate it from the tender. Councillor Davy tried to do that last year, but he was told he could not, because he would have to challenge the chair at the time. I believe this is the way to go, for my area, as well as for Samien, Samien and Samuel. And that's because we do need the work done, but we need more studies done. I like what Councillor Marsh had said about getting the trees in there. Yes, get some big, healthy trees in there, so down the road, maybe it's 10 years, maybe it's 20, maybe it's 30, but at least we will be replacing something of equal and significant value.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Councillor Janetski?
Just further to Councillor Fernandez's questioning, I'm just still trying to understand your answer, that the sidewalk issue has not been resolved, and you're still looking to get the i's dotted and the t's crossed. How much time would you need to resolve this, do you think? Because I understand staff want to go and assess the report starting June 15th, that's in two weeks today, to start, whether permitting, to start, you know, initiating the construction, and it'll probably take three or four months approximately to the fall. So, how much time do you need?
Well, I can use one example, and that would be, according to last week, it took a year and a half to work on the sidewalk policy to get to this point, and it still has a lot of contention in there. Also, these pedestrian counters that are on the Iron Horse Trail, how long are they in place before a decision is made? I think we, as citizens, deserve the right of having our areas studied the same way as the Iron Horse Trail. So, the delay is, yes, more than a year. We have to get, we have to qualify and quantify the traffic.
So, let me answer the next question then. Based on where we are here with the tender, based on your comments, is it your objective that the reconstruction process of replacing the sewers, water, the curbs and gutter, proceed by staff this year? At the same time as that happening, you still are dealing with the sidewalk issue, because I know in terms of the process, and staff can comment on it as well, that once you've done the reconstruction this year, you've still got to come back the following year, do the final coat of asphalt and stuff of that nature? That if that's happening then, then maybe the following year, that's like next year, that's when the sidewalks could be installed at the same time as the final coating of asphalt is sort of happening? Is that where you're coming from?
I think that would be acceptable, if we do the due diligence and get the actual facts and figures for traffic. Myself, I've got no problem paying for the sidewalk that goes in front of my house, if it's done correctly. And it has to be done in a way that limits damage. Last year's proposal was given to me in the form that we will move the sidewalk to the edge of the road, we will put in retaining walls, we will, these will possibly save those trees that are there, but we can't guarantee it. those trees of there, but we can't guarantee it. And that wasn't acceptable, because they were act, I, it felt like it was, um, subtly trying to get me to accept something that wasn't good for the entire area. That would have only affected my home and my side of the street. It did not, it did nothing for, for the other side on Palmer. And that's why I didn't accept it then.
So if you're waiting for these counts, as, as you're talking about pedestrian counts and some other items, could they be done and received from staff or whoever in the next month or two, or whatever? Because even though the reconstruction project will start in the middle of June and take three, four months, the sidewalk is usually the last thing that goes, goes in when you're finished the reconstruction project. Once the, you know, the road is done, the curbs are in, then they can work on the sidewalks. Would that be acceptable, too?
Well, I'm not sure how long a normal period is for study.
Okay.
But, uh, the counters, um, on the Iron Horse Trail last fall, they were the, uh, the tubes that went across the path. This year, um, I showed, uh, the mayor a photo of the counter that is between Kent and Borden. And then, um, on Saturday, um, I walked down the trail, I found new counters. That's called Eco, Eco something. Um, and that's between Cortlandt and Madison. So how long are these in place before we actually get a, a, a decisions made on the numbers that are there? I think it's only fair to have staff provide their criteria for making decisions.
Okay, thanks. An appropriate time, we'll ask staff to answer those questions.
Okay, I'll come back to staff. Counselor Singh?
I have questions of staff.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Ross.
And I'd like to thank all the counselors that did come out last year. Counselor Etherington and Fernandez, for coming out and taking a look at our street to actually see what it's like to, to be there. Thank you.
Okay, so we have questions of staff, uh, now, uh, and again, I'd like folks to try to remember that we're dealing with a tender today. Counselor Davey, you have questions of staff? Okay.
Was there not people ahead of me? Okay, there was, and that's fine. Uh, my only question is, um, how does this tender price compare to the one that we received last year? Do you know of hand?
Ms. Novakovic?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
This was tendered in 2014, and it was about $162,000 less in 2014.
Okay, thank you. That's important. I think that's a very important note. And just one quick point of clarification, um, the delegation mentioned what happened last term, I just think it's worth clarifying. I did vote actually in favor of the sidewalk, uh, last year, but I moved a motion to reconsider the road portion, which ended up failing for reasons that still I don't understand.
Counselor Fernandez, questions of staff? Okay, go ahead.
So we heard the delegation ask the question about the breaking out of the, the sidewalk cost. Am I to understand that the cost that I see for this, the phase of this project, one, $1,496,701, is for the reconstruction without the sidewalk in at all?
Through the mayor, no, it, it includes sidewalk in this tender.
Okay. So if it includes sidewalk, knowing what the situation was last year, can you help me understand why you wouldn't have at least given some indication on what the cost of the sidewalk would have been?
Through the mayor, I, I don't have the breakdown for this tender. However, for the 2014 tender, we did break that out, and it was around $36,000. I don't believe that there would be a reason that the price for the sidewalk would differ substantially from that for 2015.
Okay, so let's say, just for argument's sake, $36,000 to $40,000 for the sidewalk. We were talking earlier about the, um, the, the preservation of trees, uh, on, on certain streets, especially ones that are mature trees. Uh, I know that on the, on these streets, there are quite a variety of trees. Have we looked at how we can preserve any of these trees?
Through the mayor, uh, that exercise was done as part of the design process. Uh, the location of these trees is in such a spot that it, it makes it very difficult to save them without doing something, uh, difficult, like narrowing the roadway, um, redesigning the whole cross section. Um, the trees that are coming out, they are Ohio buckeye, as the delegation pointed out. Uh, according to forestry staff at the city, um, these are underdeveloped and will not grow to their full height. Um, so they are in support of the removal of these trees and replacement with a, with a more appropriate species for the area.
Well, it seems that our delegation had contrary information. How can you, can you rationalize that out?
I don't know what, what the information is that the, the delegation had. I'm just going by our arborist's opinion on these trees.
So the delegation suggested a deferral until we understand the tra, the, the foot pa, foot traffic, um, on Kennedy Palmer. Is there any way that we can use the materials that they're using on the Iron Horse Trail to do something like that on Kennedy Palmer?
Through the mayor, I'm not familiar with the equipment that they're using on the Iron Horse Trail. Uh, Mr. Redman's not here, he might be able to help out with that, but, um, I, you know, I think it would take some time to get some data from that, and we, uh, need to get this project, uh, started. The sidewalk, we can wait for some time, but I, I don't think we could wait for the duration that it would take to do a study with this equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Singh, you have questions of staff? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think some of the questions I had have already been answered through Counselor Fernandez, so the roadwork construction can get started as we're still reviewing the sidewalk component of it. So they're not tied in, um, like consecutively, right? So.
Through the mayor, yeah, that's correct. We can start the undergrounds, um, but the question of the sidewalk would have to come fairly soon.
Can you remind me when this first came forward as a tender for reconstruction for Kennedy Palmer? I remember two years ago, but...
Uh, through the mayor, um, it was 2014, so I'm assuming around the same time last year, so, uh, we would have tendered around April of 2014.
What's the, the length of the segment of that, the roadway, or the...
Uh, through the mayor, I don't have that in front of me.
Can't be that long. I, I've been on the street, I've driven it, so to take a look, I just wanted to kind of, uh, ask that question to make, reflect on how long it's taken. So how much more can we really look at something we've looked at for two years? What new information could really come out of something that we've engaged with residents' other opinion beyond what's already been done for the last two years?
Through the mayor, I, I, uh, there has been a lot of discussion with the residents over the last year and a half regarding the sidewalk. We haven't really heard any new issues the council hasn't already heard as well.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Mr. Taggy, you wanted to add something?
Yes, um, Mr. Mayor, through you, I, I think staff has done, uh, as much as the staff can on this project, and really at this point in time, I respectfully request council to make a decision whether council wants the sidewalk or does not want the sidewalk.
Okay, uh, thank you. There's several other counselors with questions. Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, just a question. How many trees would be, uh, directly affected by sidewalk infill?
Through the mayor, uh, we will be removing, uh, five Ohio Buckeyes as a result of this work. The largest of which is about six inches in diameter.
Six inches? Okay. So there are wider trees, bigger trees in that area. Is there, uh, are they significantly close to the path of the new sidewalk?
Through the mayor, there are other trees on the project, of course. There's some larger ones on Palmer, where we've adjusted the sidewalk alignment to preserve those trees.
Okay, and what, if, um, this project were to be considered under our brand-new sidewalk infill policy, how many points would this street have received?
Uh, through the mayor, I don't have that information. I think it was, was a priority two, although that was under the old system, I'm not sure where it falls under, under the new system.
Does Mr. Gross have an answer to that?
Priority one is what, uh, what, uh...
Uh, the information I'm getting is that it is a priority one now, under the new system.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Janetski?
Yes, thank you. Just further to your questioning with Mr. Ross, um, and the delay of installation of the sidewalk, is, and just whether it's feasible that, as you probably would agree, that sidewalk would be installed at the end of the process, if it's, once you start the, the construction this month, and goes to three, three months, whatever, and that's sort of near the end of the project, basically. With the intent of doing this, the, the, the study and getting the calculations for the sidewalk, and could that be, uh, installed next year as part of the final coating of asphalt that usually takes place, or is... Help me out here.
Through the mayor, um, certainly we could come back after the construction crew is demobilized and, and remobilized and put sidewalk in. That is, that is a possibility. I think council should be aware that coming back and doing the sidewalk after the fact will cost more than what we have tendered in the tender before you. So that is something that we can do, but it, it's, um, it's going to cost more.
Okay, and I thought that would be your answer. So how would this tender then work if the sidewalk installation would be delayed till next year? Do you have to come back with a second tender, or do you just delete it out of this one and, and redo it? I, I don't know. Help me out.
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat the question.
Okay. If, if, uh, if it's decided to do the sidewalk next year, you've got here in the budget that the sidewalk will be included in the tender tonight. So if we exclude the sidewalk for now, then would another tender have to come back to include it next year? Would you say maybe the cost will be a little more than what's, what's here? Is that the process?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it depends on when council comes back with a decision to install the sidewalk. So if council came back, uh, before the end of June, then certainly that there, there's no harm done, the construction's not done, and, and the contractor could carry on and put the sidewalk in. I think what hap, where, where we're going to run into problems, if, if the decision doesn't come for, let's say, a year, uh, the contractor will restore all the areas that they've disturbed with sod and driveways and what have you, and then we'll have to come back after that, remove all that, and then put the sidewalk in. So it really depends on the timing of, of when that decision comes.
Yeah, and, and I, and I would acknowledge that it'll cost, cost more in the long run, if, if you go that particular process. Uh, the only other council meeting we have this month is really the last day of June, I think, the 29th, whatever. So, uh, that leaves us with a month, if we're going to go that route or not. Okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Etherington? Oh, sorry, Mr. Taggy, you had your light on before, did you?
I think I did, but to what, the answer that had been provided, I think it's just not the question of cost, which obviously is a factor, but also the issue is that if we did sidewalk in two steps, means doing the road first and sidewalk next year, then one of the options will be for us to leave the road and the, and the driveway and, and the property in, in front of residents unfinished for a year or more. And I don't think that's the process we want to adopt. Ideally, the sidewalk should be constructed same time as we are doing curb and gutter, so to minimize the disruption and the length of disruption. So I would not recommend, uh, council to delay the sidewalk to next year.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Chad and Mr. Allen. Steve, the, what impact do you see the Schneider's Maple Leaf site having on this whole sidewalk issue just across from Palmer, uh, leading down toward the Iron Horse Trail?
Through the mayor, obviously, the Schneider plant, uh, with its closure, um, leads to a possible redevelopment of the site. Um, in, in any residential scenario to that, you're getting intensification, uh, lots more people in the area. Kennedy Palmer was identified as being within, uh, an area of influence for the rapid transit. On top of that, you have the Iron Horse Trail down Palmer Avenue, um, uh, that, that's on its way to, to, to other destinations as well. So, um, the, the impact of the Schneider, Schneider property is redevelopment and, uh, higher demand, I think, for, for sidewalk.
Thank you. Counselor Galloway-Seelock?
Yeah, I'm just prepared to bring the recommendation forward, uh, at the appropriate time with sidewalks. Uh, that would be my motion.
Okay, is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Ionitis? Counselor Janetski?
Yeah, this is a tender question. Uh, on page three of the tender, um, and I'm assuming this is a new project, yet I see in the line just above, uh, on page three E, just above E, it's got an estimated surplus of $470,000 from previous phases. I don't understand how you get from previous phases if this is the beginning of the project.
Ms. Palmer-Novakovic?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Could we just have a clarification? We have different numbers showing on the Palmer-Kennedy report than what, uh, Counselor Janicki is referring to.
Are you looking at the right report, Counselor Janetski?
Yes, yeah, you're on the phone.
Oh, sorry, Samuel's, I'm on Samuel Street. Where am I here? Hang on.
We're dealing with Kennedy Palmer, one, sub-three.
Okay, yes, I, I see that. Well, the same question really applies then, uh, the same scenario. Estimated surplus, $214,000 or $215,000 from previous phases.
I'll answer that one. Uh, through the mayor, um, previous phases would be the design phase, so we split the project into design and then construction. So on the, the previous phase, because this was an in-house project, uh, we used in-house staff, um, there, it's, it's a lot cheaper to do that. When we set up the budgets for, uh, the design, we're not necessarily sure if we're doing the project in-house or with a consultant, uh, so that, that's why we have a surplus right now in that phase.
And it was that much?
I'm sorry?
It was that much, $215,000?
Yes, it was.
Seems pretty high. Thank you.
Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor? This is the tender. All those in favor? Sorry. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'll now move on to, uh, one, um, two-dash-one, so the Samuel and Simeon Street, because I know there's a number of people here, uh, for that one. Ms., Counselor Marsh?
Yeah, so I have put forward a motion regarding this tender, um, and it's been distributed to some people. I wonder for the benefit of the gallery, should we put, is this an appropriate time? Can I put this forward?
But we are focusing on, on the tender right now?
On the tender? Yeah, and so the, the, the idea is that the tender be accepted without sidewalks at this time.
Okay, uh, so you're moving the tender without sidewalks?
Yeah, it's a two, oh, what? I beg your pardon?
You're moving the tender without sidewalks?
I'm moving the tender, uh, uh, go forward, reconstruction of the road, go forward without sidewalks at this time.
Okay, so this is your revised motion instead of the recommendation that's there?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Schneider.
All right, so do, uh...
Do you want to speak to it?
I would love to speak to it.
Go ahead.
All right. First of all, I want to thank everybody in the gallery. I can't believe that you're still here after so many hours, and so that is just a, a testament to the dedication of the neighbors from Simeon Street. Uh, the passion of this group is, uh, un, um, unmeasurable. They are, it's overwhelming. I do want to say that they have articulated quite adeptly, uh, that their neighborhood is quite walkable, and they've been very engaged with all of council on their points. So I just want to highlight some of those points, uh, since they have, um, decided not to, uh, have a delegate tonight because they, of the rule that really, uh, delegates coming forward about the same issue need to have new information, and they have really been thorough with all of their inform- their information. One thing that has, that is new today is that the, the petition that was circulated has 158 names on it, and the people have all signed, "We, the undersigned, wish to express to Kitchener City Council that we do not support the installation of the proposed sidewalks on Simeon Street between Pandora and Weber." I want to mention that the, they have outlined that safety is a concern for, for, to them, for students walking to Shepherd Avenue School. If they choose to walk on the new sidewalk, if it were put in, then they would have to cross mid-street in front of a lot of traffic coming off of Weber. They, they have outlined that it, it would be environmental, detrimental to the urban forest within their street. They're blessed with many, many trees, and, and their heritage integrity, the cultural value, and the communities, the community highly values the walkability of their street that is enhanced by the presence of trees. Now, I too am very much pro-walkability, pro-accessibility, and pro-safety. I do want to outline that there, or emphasize, I should say, that there is no bus stop on this street, and that many people do walk this street daily for pleasure and to get to and from where they need to go. Under the new sidewalk infill policy, if this were applicable, which it's not, because we are not, we don't have the, the year-ahead process, the number of points for this street, based on our upping of the points for 400 meters within walking distance of a community program or facility, it, the points would be 75. So that is a priority one, but it is not within the mandated level. It's not 90-plus. It is 75. And because of the strength of all of the community members who have, who have come forward, because there would be 14 trees that would be affected, an independent review, as everybody has received on council, from an arborist, not from the city, based on that report, many of those trees would be endangered, if not completely cut down. So I'm just, I'm not asking for no sidewalk. I'm asking for the sidewalk to be delayed until the presence of those mature trees is no longer in the way of the sidewalk path. I know that, you know, the, this could be several decades out, but so is our complete street's projection, several decades out. And so I, I think it is a reasonable, balanced approach, and I urge council to support my motion.
Counselor Singh?
I question the staff, and that's why I just quickly was trying to get some clarity from Mr. Taggy, about the, how it's, the street is being classified in our new policy that we just approved, and I was just told that it hasn't been classified because we just approved the policy. So the other question would be--
I'm not sure that's, that's consistent with the information we got from Counsel Marsh, and maybe with Mr. Redman here now, he can answer that.
My question is--
Mr. Redman. You can click yourself on. Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Samuel and Simeon are classified as priority one. Samuel Street has a few more points than Simeon because it's closer to a rap, future rapid transit station.
So how many points?
I believe Simeon is at 70 points with the revised policy change, and-- Sorry, I'm going off the top of my head, my BlackBerry just died, so I can't pull up the email that I sent to Sarah earlier today, but she had the most recent information for the points on Simeon, or--
It's not 90. It's not 90 percent. That's what I was really trying to get at. It's, I mean, not 90 percent, 90 points, right? It's below 90.
It is below 90, but it is within priority one.
Right. I just wanted to confirm it was below 90.
I'll come back to you, Counsel Marsh. Go ahead, Counsel Singh.
That was a question I had. I wanted to confirm it was below 90.
Okay. Counsel Janetski?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the final statement C, any new tree plantings in the city right-of-way located closer to the property line, but away from the future sidewalk. So it would still be within the right-of-way, but closer to the property line, instead of in the middle of the boulevard?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Counsel Marsh.
Just to clarify, I don't want to monopolize too much, I just want to clarify that the property line, in this instance, is quite close to the houses. The trees have been planted quite close to the road, and so there's quite a wide gap, a wide berth between the road and the property line. Yeah. It's, it's much, it's different than, I guess, the typical street.
Yeah. Now, remember where the line was when I was out there, shown by the, by the residents there?
That's right.
So then, we're going to look back in the policy B then, that would be, are you saying that we revisit this in 10 years, and 10 years from now, we look at B and say, you know, the mature trees maybe should, are now past their life, and we should do something about it? But maybe, maybe one or two mature trees that are gone, but you've still got another 12 left? How do you handle all that?
Right. So what I'm saying, originally, I didn't have in my motion under A that the phrase "and not be revisited for at least 10 years," but I've added that so that it's clear that the earliest we would revisit it would be 10 years, but not that we would necessarily revisit it in 10 years. Yeah.
Okay. Counsel Davy?
Thank you. Question of staff. Apologies if this was covered before. Of the 14 mature trees that are in the stretch, how many are expected to be cut down?
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, there's, I'm going to go off the top of my head, because I don't have all the information right in front of me, but depends what you call mature. That's a hard thing to define with a tree.
Does staff have a classification for mature?
I'm sorry?
Does staff have a classification for, for what they determine a mature?
Engineering does not have a classification for mature tree. I'm, I'm not sure if our arborists do at all. There's probably, in the Simeon, from Pandora to Sterling Block, there is approximately three or four trees that will be removed. The largest is a crab apple, that I would describe as mature for a crab apple. The two others are quite small. One is actually smaller than what we would normally plant as a replacement.
And you will be replanting, so three to four is actually, if you're replacing that one anyway, three to four is actually two to three, might--
Yeah. And there is a, there is an evergreen as well that's being removed that I would describe as mature in that block.
Okay.
In that same block, there are definitely mature trees by anybody's definition towards Sterling, that we've deviated the sidewalk away from it, but it's still in the drip zone. So as council has heard several times, that there is some risk with these. However, we, we do believe that where the sidewalk is, and if we can apply some alternative materials or construction methods, the viability of the tree is likely.
Okay. So the $64,000 question, will you be applying alternative materials to help the viability of the tree?
Through the mayor, we will, we will definitely explore options to save these trees.
Thank you.
Counsel Singh?
I'm just getting in queue for comments afterwards.
Go ahead. This is--
No one else?
Yep.
Okay. All right. This has been a bit of a struggle, because we have just approved our policy as a direction and roadmap to proceed forward in ensuring our city streets are, and for resident walkability and connectivity of our neighborhoods. At the same time, this is, for, for this street, they have not had the same process that we've, we just approved. I'm speaking to the public engagement, which now, what the policy has outlined, a year in advance, engagement with staff, as well as a council member, and then for it to come forward for approval. This is coming forward as part of the tender process, which kind of convolutes the issue somewhat. Going forward, if anything that is in priority one, even if it were to be in my own ward, I will support it regardless, because I think that's the direction that we've given staff, and that's the priority that we've set, and we can't waver from that commitment. But for this item, because of the points I've just mentioned, the, the lack of process that's been extended to, to these residents that the policy speaks to, I think it deserves us to be reflective on the overwhelming response from the neighborhood and their decision of not wanting to have a sidewalk on their street. So I will support that direction, if that is the will of the residents. But I have difficulty with the motion that's before me, because it speaks to its steps that perhaps are not, adds a bit of a confusion as to what, what really will happen. I, I would be supportive if you were to outline it as Simeon Street would remain as a priority one, but go to the bottom of the list, knowing full well that the number of kilometers we still have to do, it will still take some time, and it will, it will be definitely well beyond the 10-year timeline. And that negates the aspect of trees maturing and dying, dying off, and then looking at if the street needs, needs to have a sidewalk or not. So I will support it, if the motion is amended, for it to remain in priority one, but to come to the bottom of the list.
So are you moving that amendment?
I'm getting along with the--
Okay. Is there, is there a seconder? There doesn't appear to be a seconder. Okay. Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm convinced, I've already said it, I'm convinced that if we support this motion, we're going to create major problems for staff, and I think we're going to undermine our, the charter that we just approved, because I can see almost every neighbor trying to argue that, well, we've got mature trees. We don't even know what a mature tree is. We also have a situation where trees, if we wait out their life cycle, we're going to have different types of trees that live longer, we're going to have trees that have been cared for by people living in their homes better than others, some life cycle being shorter than others. I can see all kinds of issues, and I don't think this is the solution to the problem. We just approved the charter. I think we should make major efforts to find ways to save these trees, but we should put in the sidewalks.
Counsel Aynettis?
Well, I, I did, I thought I did key in before, because I wanted to ask staff some questions.
Go ahead.
The one question I wanted to ask is, this, there's a common theme that comes up with all, with all these sidewalk infill is mature trees, and considering the $160,000 fiasco we had for Kennedy Palmer, how many trees that we could have bought, mature-sized trees that could have paid for that, instead of going through all this and delaying everything?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but a lot of trees, they're probably about $1,000 apiece planted.
So we could have, we could have, we could have put in a forest, basically. So at this point, I think everything that we just discussed with our sidewalk infill policy, this to me is, I can't support this in, in, in any way or shape or form, unless there's, unless there was amendment to put in there, to maybe put in some trees to, to the tender, that, that's the only way I would, would support, that's the only option I would support. At this point, I think this is total contravention of what we just passed, and totally politicizing everything that we just tried not to do.
Counsel Davy?
Yeah, I guess the, it's been said. I mean, I, I truly sympathize, and I'm sure one day I'll empathize, with the ward counselor's position in this, because she's here to represent her constituents. But the, the reality is, we just, like an hour ago, passed our new pedestrian charter, and we're facing our first priority one street. So it'll be very interesting to see what happens with this vote.
Counsel Marsh?
Yeah. This is not a tender being considered within the new sidewalk policy. This is a totally, this is one from, as Counsel Singh so aptly put, this is a tender that was put out, put before us, before the, the new policy. And if we're going to wait a whole four years to revisit the, the new policy, four years from now, so that is, I guess, according to, to the definitions on the table before, three years out from, from the time when the, the policy is being implemented, then, then we cannot assume that this is a part of it. I would urge Counsel Singh and others who are reticent about the inclusion of the, of Part B and C, referring to the trees, to, to vote separately on, on the, on this motion that just includes Point A, so that really it would be the same thing as changing it from being a priority one on the top of the list to a priority one that would be lower down on the list. And so this, this is a very much an option, and, and I urge you to, to do that. I understand that this, I'm being looked at as, I'm being political, but we have 158 residents who have asserted that this is a walkable, very walkable, very accessible stretch of, of roadway and sidewalk, and, and it's used diligently, daily, by many, many pedestrians. I, I want to also point out that Samuel Street is not one that I, unfortunately, that I'm able to advocate for, because it is within the 800-meter range of an LRT stop, and, and it, under the new system, if it were in, under the new system, it would be given a, a score of 100. And so that, I'm not able, I'm not asking something that I feel is unreasonable, I'm asking for council to support the, the residents who have diligently argued their case for no sidewalk at this time, later. Let's put a sidewalk in later.
Counsel Galloway-Silak?
I'll just be brief. There's been comments about just the, the policy that was just put in place, and while I agree, this could be a slippery slope, my decision would, would have been made pre-policy and post-policy, quite frankly, and I think everyone knows where I'm going to be coming from, as I was really looking for the new policy to be stronger than initially came forward. So I believe in the connectivity, I believe in the walkability of our city, I believe in the master plans that we have outlined, I believe in GRAC's position paper, I believe, or I've heard from people who support the new policy. I understand where the residents are coming from. However, I don't believe that we will end up doing this later, because we're looking at it now in the context of a road reconstruction, not just an infill piece. So the savings that we'll get in order to do it now is something that we won't get later on, and I don't believe we will address this moving forward. And I don't agree that the area is accessible until there's sidewalks on both sides of the street, because if you have to go on the roadway, that makes the street not accessible. So I can't support this, but I can, I can again say that I, I wouldn't have supported it pre-policy either.
Okay. There don't appear to be any other comments, just very briefly. And I understand this is a, a difficult issue, and there's a variety of viewpoints around the, the council horseshoe on this, and, and I respect them, and I understand why people might go in that direction. Sir, we had delegations earlier, so at this point, we, it's really council's motion now to, to deal with it. deal with it. So unfortunately, the time for additional delegations has passed. I'm sorry about that, but you could have had the opportunity earlier to speak and you didn't register. Councils, as I was saying, I understand where people are coming from on this, but fundamentally, as I said when we were dealing with the policy, some matters for me come down to core principles and values and for me, it boils down to those principles of accessibility and human dignity. And that's what in the end I need to use to make my decision. And I know that individual members of council will consider a variety of things and I respect that. And in the end, you know, the decision of this council will ultimately make the determination in terms of how this is dealt with. Counselor Marsh, you've already spoken, but since it's your motion, I'll let you have the last word.
I'd like us to have a recorded vote and I'd like us to please vote separately on B and C as a combination, separate from A.
Okay. I will do that. I'll deal with A first then. Yes, go ahead. So clarification, so we've been asked to deal with A separately from B and C. So A is that the 2015 road reconstruction project not include sidewalk infill at this time and that does not be revisited for at least 10 years. And so if you want to support not including the sidewalk, you would vote yes. If you want to see the sidewalk go in, you would vote no. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Motion carries. All those in favor? All those opposed? So with that then, we have done that item. So we will now move on. Folks, we have 24 minutes, sorry? Oh, sorry, okay, yes, we need to vote on, on, we have to, okay, we still have to vote on the tender with respect to that motion. Okay, so we'll vote for the tender with the sidewalk out?
Yes.
You asking for a recorded vote again?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Well, now then, we have 23 minutes to get the balance of the agenda done.
Balance of the tender.
Okay, the remaining tenders have been moved. Any discussion? Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. On the first tender to do with the swimming pool, I'm just, I'm curious as to why there's such a, there are only two bids, but there's such a wide disparity. Is something being missed or are we getting the same product from both? We have a whole series of tenders and you see the prices go all over the place, but with only two, you're, we're looking at a 36% difference between the two.
Ms. Palmer.
Are we satisfied that we're getting the same product from both people or the product that we're asking tenders for?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Gazola, we have reviewed the tenders and are satisfied that both tenders are compliant and complete.
Okay. The other question I have with this is, I noticed that there's $230,000 coming from the accessibility fund. Can, and this is something you don't have to do, you can answer perhaps at a later time, but I'm just curious as to how much, what the funding is in that pot. Is there anything left and is this where it was slated to go?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The information that I have is that with the plan for 2015 encumbrances, there should be $1,000 surplus.
In that accessibility fund?
That is what I had, but we can, sorry.
I'm, I'm just.
I'll defer to Mr. Mayor on that answer.
Oh, sorry, Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can certainly tomorrow email you the balance of that corporate account. I can tell you that there is, off the top of my head, there's a substantial remaining source of funding there. This is an account that frankly, every year for the past three years, council has asked me at budget time, why are we not spending this funding? And in fact, this council cycle, Counselor Gazola, you asked me specifically about that and I referenced this tender. But I'll certainly email the council tomorrow with the outstanding balance.
So the balance of the tenders have been moved, seconded by Counselor Davy. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. We'll now move into reports of committees and Counselor Ionitis. Go ahead.
It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Etherington that Community and Infrastructure Committee recommends the followings, items 1 through 10, or 11, sorry.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh.
Are you for you, number two?
No, I'm dealing with Community and Infrastructure Report.
Oh.
Okay, everyone clear? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Singh, Planning and Strategic Initiatives Committee.
Moved by myself.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock. All items that have not already been dealt with have been moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That too is carried. Counselor Janetski, Balance of the Heritage Kitchener Report, which I guess would just be item number one.
That's correct, just one item. So number one pursuant to Section 42 Ontario Heritage Act.
Okay, you don't need, you don't need to read the whole thing.
Okay, this is dealing with 137 Queen Street South, so I'm recommending approval of it.
And seconded by Counselor Fernandez. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, we'll move on. Any questions and answers? Okay, just keep in mind, folks, we got, get through the rest of the agenda and we're running out of time. Counselor Fernandez?
I just wanted a quick question about the, we've heard a lot about the festival that happened this weekend. Hopefully, we can bring something forward at the next council meeting to address the noise complaints that we all of us have heard about today.
Okay, I think staff are aware of it and are looking at the issue already. Counselor Etherington?
To Chair, a quick question in relation to protection of downtown heritage buildings. I think we agreed that there would be, staff would be looking into action to protect other buildings in the downtown core. I just wanted to ask if anything has been done on that yet? I realize it's early, but it's about a month. Are we working on that?
Mr. May?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If I recall correctly, the direction was that Heritage Kitchener would take the lead on that particular research. As I understand it, I believe they're meeting tomorrow and that their entire agenda is dedicated to that topic.
Thank you.
Okay, no other questions? It's been moved by Counselor Janetski, seconded by Counselor Gazola, that lead be given the mover and seconder to introduce the bylaws list on the agenda and that the same be taken as read a first time and stand refer to the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Sorry, actually, before I do that, late starters. Sorry, Madam Clerk.
That's all right. Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have a late starter bylaw relating to PSEC report number three concerning, sorry, the zones change application for 1506COK-SRM.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just redo that vote on the bylaws first reading. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Ionitis that council resolve itself in the committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Counselor Ionitis?
Okay, it's moved by Counselor Galloway-Seelock, the second readings.
All.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Do we have a mover for?
I'll move it.
Item number one?
One has been dealt with. Number two?
I'll move it.
Number one, Forest Heights Pool Renovation's been done?
We've done all of the tenders.
We've done, oh, that's, sorry, yeah.
Number two, committee of adjustment.
Number two, sorry. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
I'll move item three.
We have a mover?
Have.
Counselor, Mayor Verbanovich, any questions?
Oh, Counselor Marsh?
Counselor Marsh? Is there a staff person here who was present during the nomination committee meeting for this decision, this recommendation? No? Is there usually a staff person with the nominating committee?
Clerk is here.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I was there, Counselor Marsh.
Okay, so I'm just wondering if they considered having some alternates for this committee? If somebody decides to drop out or moves or what have you? Do we have any alternates? Was there a shortlist?
No, the committee did not consider alternates because we are allowed up to four people on this particular committee. Two puts us at par with the other municipalities. Four gives us our full voting rights at this point.
And now we have four if, after these three are moved?
We have gone ahead with this committee with as little as two members. That puts us on par with the other municipalities. So at this point, if we did have one or two people drop out, we would still have
Oh, I see what you're saying.
more than the rest of the municipalities for our voting rights.
I would just like to point out, and I know we're late, but that one of the three people that was nominated is already on a city committee, on a center in the square committee. And he's a wonderful person, nothing against him. I'm just, don't understand the why we would not engage other citizens who want to be a part of a voluntary committee. I'm not going to change anything right now, but going forward, I'm going to put forward a motion, I'll give a notice of motion, that we need to have a shortlist so that we can appreciate and give the nominating committee their due power, but at the same time, we need to also have some alternates to choose from if we find that there's a discrepancy.
Counselor Fernandez?
I was asking the same, I was going to ask the same question. I thought it was important. There was a gentleman, number 23, Mr. Edward Saxon, who had some very solid background that I thought we should add to the list. Maybe what I can ask is that should one of these three fall away that we take, give him some first dibs on another position?
Counselor, I have Counselor Gazola next.
Counselor Gazola?
Am I up? Yeah, I just wanted a clarification. Originally, Counselor Snyder is on the committee, right? And at one point, I was an alternate and then I thought I was going on to the committee. Now, am I still going on to the committee or am I still an alternate? Or if we do, does that give us five people or? I'm just trying to understand.
Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Counselor Gazola, you remain as the councillor alternate.
So I don't get to? Okay.
Okay, so call the vote.
All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
Hello, Jesus.
Item number?
I don't even get to sit on the committee.
I'll move number four.
Counselor Etherington moves item number four. Any questions?
Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, I'm not comfortable with delegating this person at this time. We have a process. We've just gone through that with the Aaronata Committee. I really feel that we should do that same due diligence for this property standards committee. I don't think we should be just designating somebody at this time. So I think we need to go through the proper process, go through the nominating committee and do the due diligence.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
Yeah, cool. That's a motion. Okay.
Counselor Janetski's next.
Yes, I was going to say the same thing here. It's, we should go to due diligence and do the proper process. We still got another three and a half years to fill this position, I mean, not to fill it, but three and a half years for this person to be in this particular position. And of course, even in the staff report, going through the process that they've recommended here, this is not even ideal that the staff, the cooks department have vindicated there. So really, we have the time, let's go through, fit to fill the property. We should advertise and go through the proper process with the nominating committee making a proper recommendation.
Can I call a question?
Counselor Davy's next. You have to actually take his call at the question.
Yes, that's what I wanted to say. Call Paul, Counselor Singh.
Can I call the question?
Yeah.
Okay. You have to, so.
Okay, it's been called the question, there's no further debate.
So which motion's on the floor?
The first, original motions on the floor.
What happened to my motion? The amendment has to be taken first.
It's, yeah.
Contribute the motion.
All those in favor?
For what?
For the original motion.
Okay. Sorry, the original motion?
Yes.
The original motion was that, just, I'll help you out here, Counselor Ionitis.
Sure.
The original motion was that Ms. Johnson approved under the committee. Counselor Fernandez indicated that she's not supportive of that and wants the normal process to be held. Counselor Ionitis has said that that's a contrary motion and so the first motion would have to fail in order for that motion to be considered. All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, sorry.
Thank you, thank you for that. Counselor Singh moves item number five. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any other items, Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk? No? Okay. All right. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Galloway-Seelock that the proceedings and the recorded community interests and the conflicts taken in the meeting of the committee of the whole held this date as attached heretofore and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. That's carried. It's been moved by Counselor Janetski, seconded by Counselor Gazola, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading, including the late starter, be taken as read a third time, be finally passed and numbered seriously by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And it's been moved by Counselor Schneider that we now adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, with seven minutes to spare. Too late. Thank you, everybody.